And I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. May I have the clerk call the roll, please?
Mayor Moreno.
Here.
Vice Mayor Woods.
Here.
Councilmember Marciano.
Here.
Councilmember Lane.
Here.
Thank you. Are there any additions, deletions, or modifications?
No, ma'am.
Okay. Onto announcements and presentations. And our list is long, and this is fabulous. We're the city of Palm Beach Gardens. We do it right. We do it well. We have some spectacular kids in our community. So at this point, I would like to have recognition of the Palm Beach Gardens Gators 2018 Pop Warner Football Junior Varsity Division Super Bowl Champions! And I don't even have to call Daniel up because he's already there. Daniel Prito.
Good evening, I'm Mayor and Council. Daniel Prito, for the record, definitely deserves some consideration. I'm here before you in my great honor to give this presentation tonight. A lot of hard work, a lot of hard work by some very-
Strong, fast, big, young men, and some very dedicated parents and volunteers from the PBG YAA, the Palm Beach Gardens Youth Athletic Association. I just want to give a brief history of the program. The Palm Beach Gardens Youth Athletic Association started the football program in 2006, has grown in the last thirteen-odd years, and has now gotten to the point where the talent level is undeniable. 2017, just last year, they won the Pee-wee Super Bowl championship, and many of those players are now back to be here before you tonight for recognition for this year's championship. Like I said, there's a lot of hard work by a lot of volunteers. I'd like to recognize some of the coaches. There's head coach Alton Butler, Charlie Gideon, Bob Hamilton, Commissioner and defensive coordinator Scotty Liza, and Brandon Aronson, who not only is a coach and was the head coach last year, but is the president of the Football League for the PBG YAA. In Orlando, Florida, at the Wide World of Sports, the Super Bowl was played, and in the final game, the championship game, the score ended up being thirty-six to eight. Yes, cheer away. It was quite the game. It got out of hand by the, probably the first quarter.
Afternoon session, and this starts with junior varsity, the Palm Beach Gardens Gators, and Lenape Valley.
Not only two championships for Florida, how about Palm Beach in particular? What a pass that was by Tyler Aronson to Michael Wright, dropping it in the bucket. And Aronson again, watch this move by Elijah Hopkins. I know this was Drew's favorite move of the tournament, a little dipsy-doo, as Hopkins goes down the right sideline with that speed for the score, and Palm Beach Gardens just dominated this game. Chauncey Bowens, nice cut, gets it in, bounces outside, shows his thunder into lightning as he gets into the score.
These were the first-half highlights. I wish I could show you more, but there was a lot more scoring to be done. With that, I'd like to bring up President of the Football League, Brandon Aronson, and Commissioner Scotty Liza. They have a brief message to give to the council, and then we'll have everybody up for a nice photo op.
Thank you. Thanks, Dan. I think you covered most of the accomplishments this season. The boys were sixteen to no over the season, and during the whole season, they outscored, we outscored the opponents four-hundred-and-ninety-one to thirty-six. So it was a great, great year for us. You know, we'd like to touch on, besides our team, the whole league and the accomplishments in the league. This year, as a conference, we have five conference champions. Palm Beach Gardens, we represented four age groups and won three championships. So as a program, we've had a ton of success over the past three years. Anything else went out, Scotty?
No, just that it's been an amazing journey to watch. These kids here, we've had since they're five years old, and they were one of those teams that got beat like that. And now they're the team beating everybody in the nation like that. We'd just like to thank you guys for the facilities that we have and the ability to coach these kids.
All right. The rest of the coaches, staff, and boys, head on up here.
Thank you very much. Thank you. If everybody can. Congratulations.
All right, so let's get them lined up this way, facing this-
A lot of souvenirs.
Here, Matt, you here. Matt, here. I'll just stay behind you.
You're getting in her way.
Thank you very much.
Okay, all the good.
A lot of souvenirs.
All right, you're definitely in the basket.
Yeah, let's get the ball guys in the back. This way, this way. Out to everybody.
Here, why don't we give a shout out to everybody?
Get a couple dealers.
Here, Matt, you here. Matt, here. I'll just stay behind you.
Yeah, we will.
Why don't somebody get on there? Somebody, somebody get on there.
I'm a football player.
My boy.
He's getting in her way.
Thank you very much.
Okay, so we go from brawn and brains to brains right now. So Y-School update on the launch of the Cube Satellite. that right? Perfect. Daniela Salazar and Kieran Spencer to the podium. And, oh, Russell Wider, come on up, give us your report.
My name is George Green from the Y-School. My fellow classmates and I are excited to update you about our efforts over the last year and into the future.
I'm sorry, could you please speak closer to the microphone?
Sorry about that.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is George Green from the Y-School. My fellow classmates and I are excited to update you about our aerospace efforts over the last year and into the future. You may recall we spoke to you about our plans to launch a CubeSat into space. We are happy to report to you that since we last saw you, we have accomplished that mission. Here is how we accomplished our goal since we last talked to you. At the beginning of last summer, a few members of the CubeSat development team, including myself, met with Dr. Platte of NIRAD twice in a NIRAD lab in Melbourne, Florida, to work on and prepare the payload for our CubeSat. After we completed the payload, we went to Kennedy Space Center to perform tests required by NASA on our CubeSat. We did two types of testing, thermal vacuum testing and vibrational testing. Once the CubeSat was ready for launch, we handed off to Near Space Launch, another aerospace company we worked with on this project. In August, we attended and presented at the Small Satellite Conference, a conference where thousands of small and large businesses, nonprofits, and educational institutions and aerospace enthusiasts came to meet with others who, like us, are involved with small satellites. In September, myself and a few other select students traveled to Seattle to integrate the CubeSat. We entered a clean room and performed final testing certifications and cleaning on the CubeSat. The final step was inserting the CubeSat into the deployer and removing the last electrical inhibit, which I had the privilege of performing with one other team member. The completed deployer, which now housed our CubeSat, was delivered to SpaceX and loaded onto the Falcon 9 rocket, along with numerous other small satellites. After three years of dedicated work on the project, on December 3, our CubeSat was launched out of Vandenberg Air Force Space aboard the SpaceX Falcon 9, with our instructor Kevin Simmons present to witness the climax of our three-year journey. We're the very first middle school in history to accomplish such a feat. We started receiving data from our CubeSat several hours after the launch, and it is currently sending data to us in orbit right now. But this is not the end of our journey. We still have many missions planned for the future, and LoD and will tell them all about
George shared with you updates about our program to date, but we are happy to tell you that these efforts are just the beginning. This year, the Y-S CubeSat development team has grown immensely to nearly twice its size, meaning more of an ability to develop new Cube Satellites within our school. Last year, the team split into six groups, five of which wrote and sent descriptions of a proposed Cube Satellite to NASA's CubeSat Launch Initiative Program, an opportunity which grants free transportation via a rocket when building a small satellite. This opportunity was given to our team before, as the Y-Sat 1 was selected previously for this program. The sixth group wrote a proposal involving a lunar rover. All teams conducted a preliminary design review, which is an extremely vital step before submitting proposals which involve new space technology. The design review ensured a higher chance of success, as a large panel of experts questioned both feasibility and impact, all within the field of aerospace and CubeSats, from both Aerojet Rocketdyne and NIRAD, both of which are local aerospace industries. We expect to hear from NASA's CSLI program by February 15 of this year, and while most of these proposals are Cube Satellites, we are excited to tell you more about one proposal in particular. Here's Russell to share about our future goals.
As Logan pointed out, our future aerospace plans include something even more daring: our Emeris Lunar Rover. We found the name of Emeris to be fitting, as it translates to "child of the moon" in Latin. Emeris will have an educational payload to evaluate the efficacy of using commercial off-the-shelf capacitors versus that of space-grade batteries in the lunar environment. We believe that understanding how well technology works on lunar surface will prepare industries to operate on the moon. Our ride to the surface will be provided by Astrobotics Peregrine Lander. Astrobotic is a company based out of Pittsburgh, Pennsylvania, who we met with in May of 2018 to discuss our plans for the project. We intend to deploy in the moon's northern hemisphere in an area named Lacus Mortis, which translates to "the lake of death" in early 2021. We intend to be the first school to land a lunar rover on the moon. And as you can see, we love aerospace at the Y-School, and we are not daunted by large undertakings. But we don't just stop there. We are also working on changing the face of STEM education in our community, so that more students can enjoy similar experiences to what you have heard about tonight. Now here's Daniela to catch you up on our exploits.
My teammates have shared with you the progress of our aerospace efforts, and I'm excited to share with you how our efforts have been branched out to include legislative initiatives. With the success of the Cube Satellite as it was underway last year, our policy team, which is comprised of both debate and CubeSat students, was born. We wanted more students to know about the STEM possibilities with which our school engages, so the group started with a simple resolution, using a debate-style template. The goal was to specifically increase awareness of the CubeSat Launch Initiative, which is the very program from which our CubeSat proposal was selected. We submitted this draft to our local representative, Brian Mast. We were honored when his team got fully onboard, leading teleconferences and providing research to create with our help the final outcome, House Resolution 109, otherwise known as the Y-Sat 1 Resolution, named after our own satellite. In advance of presenting the resolution to Congress, Brian Mast visited our school as part of our Distinguished Speakers series. He visited with the students and shared that supporting STEM education was the key to retaining bright minds of the future here in Florida. The legislation was officially introduced to Congress in February of 2018, with several students and our two teachers in the gallery. This success inspired us to do something more locally, and in fact, statewide, that will help students be exposed to real-world experiences, with a particular focus on those students who might not otherwise receive the benefit. Here is Kieran to tell you about our current exploits.
As Daniela explained, last year's legislative efforts were quite successful for our policy team. While we are quite proud of our federal initiative, we don't want to stop there. Instead, we want to make what we do at our school accessible to more students in Palm Beach County, and indeed, the state of Florida overall. We recognize that our friends in public schools find their STEM education limited by lack of funding, curriculum constraints, and lack of real-world application knowledge when it comes to aerospace. We want to change that by creating a way for teachers, particularly in Title I schools, to receive training and in and support for the experiential contests that we participate in here at Y-S. It has been a long but informative process. Late last school year, policy students and our coach, Shawna Christensen, met with K-12 subcommittee members in Tallahassee, as well as local legislators, to get input. We were advised to obtain letters of support in order to show industry and academic buy-in. To date, we have received support from several companies and organizations, including Aerojet Rocketdyne, Balkan, the American Institute of Aeronautics and Astronautics, the Missileers, and Florida Atlantic University. We are also working closely with Palm Beach County School District STEM Council, the South Florida Science Museum, and have reached out to Palm Beach State College and the Florida Institute of Technology as well. Further, we anticipate Representative Thad Altman of the Space Coast and President of the Astronaut Memorial Foundation to lead our legislative efforts. Most exciting, our coach received a grant from the Florida Space Grant Consortium to implement a pilot of this initiative. This summer, training will be provided to ten local Title I teachers who received stipends from the grant to bring programs back to their respective schools. Our ultimate goal is that these schools will be able to establish their own STEM teams, and that they will be inspired to undertake a lifelong interest in STEM-related careers in our state. We hope you are likewise inspired by our aerospace and policy initiatives at Y-S and look forward to keeping you informed about our progress. Thank you.
You all are unbelievable. To the parents, you've done a spectacular job. All the parents in the room, wave your hands. Spectacular job. Can we take a couple pictures? Okay.
Yes, I was thinking the same thing.
Well, we're missing a little bit of our council, so in a moment, we will start again.
Good. Good evening, Council. Charlotte Przynski, Leisure Services Administrator. As you know, since 2005, the Honda Classic has been in the city of Palm Beach Gardens. This year's event will be held February 25 through March 3 at PGA National, as usual. As you know, the international media exposure that's given to this event highlights the city as a premier destination for new residents and new businesses. But that event brings so much more to our community. Here to tell you more about the event and what the community impact is of the Honda Classic, I'd like to introduce Ken Kennerly, Executive Director, and Andrew George, our Tournament Director. Gentlemen?
Good evening, Mayor and members of the council. Following the great, congratulations to the football team, of course, on their great victory, and to the future leaders of our country from the Y-School. And as Andrew and I were whispering back there, we now know who's going to design our new innovative structure at the Honda Classic. I like the Cube Satellite, I like the sound of all that. Anyway, we're going to get started here. First of all, thank you for everything the city has done for us since we took over this great event following '06. As Charlotte mentioned, the Honda Classic has been in Palm Beach County now sixteen years, twelve years under our management, and going on year thirteen at PGA National. So we're going to highlight a couple of the comments here as we go, assuming I don't mess this up. There we go. Just quickly, as you may or may not recall, Honda, a great loyal partner, as they always are, thirty-eight years, the longest-running title sponsor on the PGA Tour. As a comparison in the world of sport, Gatorade is the second-longest-running sponsor in all of sport, believe it or not, with the NFL at year thirty-six. So Honda eclipses inconsistency, which is quite a testament in today's world, certainly, and as we all know, they're a fantastic partner. Their current agreement goes through 2021, which will be year forty for them. We're going into year thirty-eight now, and obviously, we anticipate re-upping with them well into the future, and things look good on that front. Another quick update before we get into our management report, our tournament report. As many of you know, PGA National was sold recently. I believe the closing was two weeks ago. Walton Street Capital purchased the resort in '07, '08, and sold it to Brookfield Asset Management, which is a Canadian pension fund, billion-dollar fund, owns several properties. We, Andrew and I, and some of our board members, including Mr. Morikawa from Honda, have met with the principals at Brookfield, and they assure us that not only they're going to be great partners, but they're going to invest significant dollars into the property, which is only going to take it up, you know, several levels. Quick soundbite today, we heard the new ownership group has been in all week. We heard that although we don't have a specific number on the reinvestment into the property, they're certainly looking to, as they said, make this a breakers on the West Side of '95, was a comment used today. So we think that's pretty special, obviously, as we go forward, a great partner, knowing for us as we continue to take the tournament up. Couple of quick highlights and notables from 2018 tournament. The broadcast was up eighteen percent year-over-year from seventeen. Saturday broadcast, best broadcast since '04, obviously, with our great field, which continues to improve, and the re-arrival, if you will, of Tiger Woods set all sorts of television rating records. Our attendance was up over two-hundred-and-twenty thousand, which again, was another record for us. The economic impact of the event that Charlotte alluded to, pretty significant, at fifty-eight million dollars into this great community. Little over ninety-two hundred measured room nights, of course, we can't measure every single room night that's attached to the tournament, but it was almost a twenty-five percent increase year after year. American Honda Birdies for Children campaign, which many of our great community participate in, another record for us, over two-point-one million dollars, and we touched over a hundred local 501(c)(3) organizations, which again, is another record for us on the Birdies for Children program. Our philanthropic giving, as you may recall, and we'll talk about cares here in a minute, every PGA Tour event is a 501(c)(3), and it's critical that we all remember that. It's really what drives us for success every year. And our philanthropic giving this past year was a little over four-point-five million, which was almost a million-dollar increase over 2017, and just shy of forty million dollars in the history of the Honda Classic. And I just reinforce that, I just came down from PGA Tour meetings yesterday and today, and you know, the partnership we have with this, the great city of Palm Beach Gardens, is really becoming a best practice and will be recognized as such. They understand how close our relationship is and our partnership is. You all get it, we get it. You know, it's about philanthropy, it's about driving economic impact into this great community. You know, we apologize to the crowds that we put on our great streets of the city of Palm Beach Gardens, but you know, that's what you get when you have a major sporting event in our, in our community. So, and I say that quite seriously, and you know, the mayor and I have talked about this in the past, and it is a special and very unique relationship that we have with you all. The television coverage, as you may or may not recall, over fifty hours of coverage between live and rebroadcast on both NBC. This past year with CBS, if you recall, we're going back to NBC. NBC had the Olympic Games last year, so they're our historical network partner. But between CBS and the Golf Channel last year, we had over fifty hours, and of course, we're going to, you know, enhance that this year with our partnership with NBC. We had over sixty minutes of what we call direct, on-air, measured coverage, highlighting the city of Palm Beach Gardens, and of course, PGA National Resort and Spa. That's in and out of broadcasts, if you see on the, as they cut away to commercials, the intro, and as they exit the show. So it's pretty significant. We have great blimp coverage, as you know. We work closely with Discover the Palm Beaches on getting some HD footage as well. So while the focal point, of course, is on the city of Palm Beach Gardens, it's important that we remember the, as most of the county as well. You know, the broadcast on the PGA Tour continues to grow. It's now over a billion potential households worldwide, two-hundred-and-twenty-seven countries, and in twenty-three languages. So the torches continues to grow. They just set a new deal with Discovery Television on an international front. It's a two-billion-dollar deal. So we're going to continue to see, you know, the product, the PGA Tour professional golf product, continue to grow, which is only more eyeballs on us and our great city and our great community. Last year, we started Honda Classic Live, which was an outside-the-ropes, three-day broadcast. We had five cameras. We used people like Josh Cullen and several other media, social media, millennial influencers as well, to Facebook Live our outside-the-ropes coverage, because from our standpoint, as you know, you've been to the tournament, it's all about creating that energy. Because we're, at the end of the day, I've said it before, we're in the entertainment business, we're not necessarily in the golf business, and that's why we've seen the crowds and the return on investment that we all make. So, you know, with that, it just continues to grow. I'm going to hand it over to the true leader of this team, Andrew George, our Tournament Director, to tell you about the philanthropic impact of the event.
Thank you, Ken, and thank you to everyone up there. You think about the year-round partnership that we have, and as we go into 2019, we're really excited about everything. The support that you guys have given us is very much appreciated. And as you look at this slide, the most important to our team and what we do day in, day out, you know, truly to strive for this number, and Ken mentioned it, four-point-five-five million this last year, all staying here in South Florida, and that's the important part for us. Many of them are right here in Palm Beach Gardens, one-hundred-and-thirty different organizations supported. That continues to grow on a year-round basis. And as we look at that number, again, four-point-five-five million is great, but it's the impact that we're trying to make, and fifty thousand kids and families were positively impacted this last year, up from about thirty thousand the year before. You know, we continue, as we ask for everybody's help, the awareness of the philanthropic side of the business. You see Justin Thomas and Ricky Fowler getting a million-dollar check on the green, and it's hard to remember that this is about charity, and it is about giving back. So we've measured this over the last couple of years, at Ken's nod to do this onsite, a small sample, but we're proud to see the growth here. We're at seventy-eight percent in awareness of the philanthropic side, which was up from about twenty-two percent in 2014. So we're getting there, the traction's going, that we feel the momentum is possibly moving forward, but we ask that everyone continue to share that message that we have for Honda Classic Cares. And the last bullet here, we want this to be more than just a one-week event, and you know, at Ken's leadership, we've continued to have other events in the Honda Classic Cares calendar. We have a Honda Classic Cares Week in June. We'll show a quick video to end up here, but through grants, through the American Honda Birdies for Children program, and these ancillary events, we have our 5K coming up next weekend on the nineteenth, to run the back nine of the PGA National Champion Course with all the scaffolding and everything else up. So we try to do fun events that ultimately, again, tie back into the philanth- it's hard to remember that this is about charity and it is about giving back. So we've measured this over the last couple of years at Ken's nod to do this onsite, a small sample, but we're proud to see the growth here. We're at 78% in awareness of the philanthropic side, which was up from about 22% in 2014. So we're getting there, the traction's going, that we feel the momentum is possibly moving forward, but we ask that everyone continue to share that message that we have for Honda Classic Cares. And the last bullet here, we want this to be more than just a one-week event. And, you know, at Ken's leadership, we've continued to have other events in the Honda Classic Cares calendar. We have a Honda Classic Cares Week in June. We'll show a quick video to end up here, but through grants, through the American Honda Birdies for Children program and these ancillary events, we have our 5K coming up next weekend on the 19th, to run the back nine of the PGA National Champion course with all the scaffold and everything else up. So we try to do fun events that ultimately, again, tie back into the philanthropic side. And with that, I mentioned the video, we were going to show a highlight football film of Ken growing up, but after seeing the other one that we had, I think we scrapped that and go back to Honda Classic Cares. This is a recap impact video of last Honda Classic Cares Week in June. We go and visit the different charities that we support, learn more about their story and more about, just, you know, set aside the number, what they're really doing in the community.
Present this check for $5,000 to you guys and everything you're doing out here in the Glades.
The parents in one classroom and their preschool children in the other classroom, and prepare all of them for success, not only in school, but also in life.
We're so thrilled to be able to present this check for $12,000.
The Honda Classic Cares, and it cares all the way out here to the Glades, and it cares about the residents here in the Glades.
This grant from Honda Classic Cares is huge. It allows us to serve more teachers. We're going this year from 32 schools served to 40 schools, and this grant helps us get there. And it also connects us to a class organization, the Honda Classic.
You don't understand the deep feeling of gratitude in a child's eyes when they get their first bicycle. No matter what their age, there's something from the inside that just blossoms out.
$15,000 for you all to keep doing what you do so well, buddy.
Honda Classic Cares donated $15,000 to the Unlimited Foundation, and that's going to help several children be able to choose limb-saving surgery over amputations.
Honda Classic Cares!
It's our great honor to present you, a contribution to help you bring this great team to Scotland.
To be able to give this experience to those kids, one of the proudest moments of my life.
$25,000 for a $100,000 contribution.
We received a grant that will allow us to significantly transform the education and conservation impact for Palm Beach County schoolchildren. This Honda very well may migrate hundreds of thousands of miles.
So once again, thank you for everything you all do. And just a quick addition, we just had our Junior Honda Classic here last week. We had 310 kids, 23 countries, 16 states. It's 23 countries, 16 states, interesting dynamic there. And then this past fall, we had the Honda Classic High School Invitational, where we had over 250 players representing six states, of course, with the leading teams in Florida as well. But we continue to grow, it's part of that 52-week marketing platform. We have a show on ESPN Radio every week of the, every week of the year as well. But without our great partnership with you all, we certainly wouldn't be where we are. So thank you very much.
Andrew, for those of you that don't know, Andrew started at the Honda Classic as an intern, selling the Birdies for Children's program. So they've made a huge investment in our city, and the city has made a huge investment in the Honda Classic, and we are a wonderful partnership. And I've been delighted to be ambassador with the Honda since Ken and the organization took over and moved it to PGA National. Thank you for inviting me back then to be involved, and as long as we can continue, we will. Thank you. Okay, next on our agenda, we, I love these announcements and presentations tonight. Next on our agenda, USTA, United States Tennis Association Award to the City of Palm Beach Gardens Tennis Center as the Member Organization of the Year Award. Charlotte?
Good evening again, Charlotte Przynski. I'm excited to share with you tonight. It's okay, we're going with it. Is it okay?
I did, I skipped.
Okay.
I apologize.
All right, it's okay.
Erwin, you can hold on a sec. Okay.
We're flexible, it's all good. Good evening. I am excited this evening to share with you some great information about our tennis center. First of all, I'd like a couple of our representatives to come on up. With me to share this evening tonight is Laura Schubert, Wendy Tatum, Annie Moll, and Bill McDermott. They are your core to the tennis center, but we're going to talk about the other ones standing, or seated behind them here in a little bit. Before we get to the award presentation video, I'd like to share with you, though, some of the things that happen on a daily basis at your tennis center. First, we have 26 adult teams that play in various leagues throughout our region. I think that is one of the absolutely largest combination of teams in any public or private facility probably in South Florida. Our youth programs are growing at a rapid rate. This year alone, we've seen a 50% increase in the number of youth playing tennis. We have 13 certified tennis pros, again, unheard of in most tennis centers. You can frenzy, rally, cardio, and hit your way through a wide range of programs for your health and your social activities. Those with special needs are served through participating in our activities and/or in programs such as Jamie's Angels and Love Serving Autism. In fact, one of the things you won't see in the video tonight, but one of our pros, Lisa Pagliisi, has won an award for the Love Serving Autism through the same program that is going to give us our award, and she was recognized in the state of Florida as leading in those programs. Recently, we've also been awarded grants from the USTA National Program and Florida Program to grow our wheelchair tennis program. And Wendy has been asked to join in a training at no cost to the city to learn more about how to further that program in our area. And finally, we're the hosts to major tournaments with worldwide acclaim. Starting this Wednesday, the Grand Dames International Ladies Tennis Tournament, ages 30 to 90 years old, will be playing all of their matches at our tennis center. About 100-plus participants have already been registered. That, on top of just daily court play, you will not find an open court, as we've heard before. One of the things, though, that I want to share with you tonight, and who will also be with us, and I want to call up Sherri Beckman. She is a resident who plays at our tennis center, and she plays a key role in the video that you're going to see, because she is the one who nominated our tennis center for this award. So I'd like to play you the award, the winners of the USTA Florida Member Organization of the Year. Maybe I have to, there we go.
Our next award goes to a very special group of people, and it is the Member Organization of the Year Award. This award recognizes a current USTA Florida member organization that best exemplifies service to the community, service to its members through junior and adult programs, and service to the game of tennis. Our winner this year is the Palm Beach Gardens Tennis Center.
I am both very proud and very fortunate to be a tennis player in these days in the city of Palm Beach Gardens. Day and night, Palm Beach Gardens Tennis Center just is, got a special chemistry going. The place is hopping and buzzing and swinging. There's absolutely nothing missing, except you have to be sure to get up very early in the morning to call for a tennis court. But what is the city of Palm Beach Gardens doing to make sure that that's not going to be too big a problem? Well, to the 22 clay and four blended line hard courts, and there are some pickleball courts too, but we're not going to talk about those. They're in full expansion mode right now to add more courts and build a 10,000-square-foot clubhouse by 2019. That's after they already won the USTA Facility of the Year Award in 2014. All of this is delivered to the citizens of Palm Beach Gardens at a reasonably-priced public facility open to everybody. So how do they do this? And I'm going to steal a little bit of, Bill and I had a conversation about this, and I'm not going to steal all of everything he's going to say, but they are a self-sustaining model. So their other public tennis facilities come and see what they're doing to be so successful. The city manages the tennis center, and what I've noticed, but goes on there, is there's not a single weak link in the chain. There is a chemistry that they have been able to create that just sometimes magically happens at the tennis center. And in Palm Beach Gardens, oh my god.
We are also part of a larger team that includes, first of all, expert maintenance guys. We're told by visiting tournament players that ours are the best courts they play on. They take a lot of pride in their work, and we are very proud of them. We have a front desk staff of people who are cheerful, customer-oriented, and give the welcome. That is characteristic of our organization. We try to know people by their names and make them feel as though they are at home. We have 12 USPTA pros who provide outstanding individual and group instruction and are pillars of our programming. These folks do a great job for us. Some of them bring special skills and special abilities. Lisa? Hi? And we're grateful to all of them, but we also enjoy our association with a very well-managed city under the direction of manager Ron Ferris, and includes an IT department and a public works department, which give us support in a variety of fields. Rapid response, expert care, lets us concentrate on the tennis. So we are a team, and on behalf of that team, we very gratefully accept this award. On behalf of our team, the city of Palm Beach Gardens. Thank you.
So with that, you heard Bill talk about the team, and they wanted to make sure the tennis staff, which we've added the whole group here, wants to thank all the other divisions and departments in this city, because they believe without them, these awards could not happen. So I give you the Florida Member Organization of the Year. Ms. Mayor and Council, please come down so we can take a photo. They're amazing.
All righty. Bye all. Thank you for being here. Great job.
Okay. Veterans Administration presentation, Casey Mitchell, thank you for joining us.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor and Council. I'm really excited to be here tonight. For the record, Casey Mitchell, Director of Golf at Sand Hill Crane. I join you tonight to give you a short presentation highlighting our 12th Annual Mayor's Veterans Golf Classic. And to give you a little bit of history, it's our 12th annual. It was hosted December 1, December 1, 2018 was the Golf Classic. It started, it started in 2006, and before we begin, I just want to thank you all for your support. I know all of you either showed up to the event, played in the event, helped us raise, do fundraising, Mr. Ferris, Mr. Stepp, you all were great. So thank you, we couldn't have done it without you guys. But we just completed the 12th annual, like I said, we had, with the help of our sponsors, city administration, the participants, over 50 golf and city staff members, volunteers, our police and fire rescue departments, our honor guard. 2018, I'm happy to say, was a record year. We raised $33,353.06 to go to the VA. So that gives us a 12-year total of $282,488.16. So joining us tonight is Mary Phillips, she's the Chief of Voluntary Services at the VA, and she would like to say a few words.
Thank you, Casey, and good evening, Mayor and City Council. I just want to start out by saying, I just want to say that the city of Palm Beach Gardens, you care. You care as much as the Honda Classic cares. I have to say that this program, as Casey said, started 12 years ago. Started 12 years ago in my office. One of your former HR directors was in the midst of retiring, and he needed something to do while his house was waiting to be sold. And he said, "I want to volunteer, but I don't know what I really want to do." I asked him what he liked doing, and he said, "I like playing golf, that's really what I like doing." And I said, "Well, why don't you consider helping us with a golf tournament?" And he ran with the idea, and 12 years later, just as Casey said, we've received that amount of funds for our homeless and indigent veterans, our veterans that are in need of supportive services at our medical center. And I just want to tell you a little bit about how that money goes. That money is used to help with things that normally our tax dollars cannot pay for. So there are not appropriated funding to be able to say, "Use this to pay your electricity, use this to go get gas if you need gas to get someplace, to put a deposit down on a home or something." We have over 400 of our veterans that are living in what we call supportive housing. They're getting some of the housing offset, but they still need money to help them out. And by having this available, I can tell you, my position within 24 hours or less, we can make those funds available to them. And I want you to know as well, we don't just give it to them, we really give it to a landlord, we give it to the utility company, we make sure that it gets into the right hands. And one story I'd like to just share with you is, and it came across my desk, where a veteran needed tires. And, you know, there's no, there's no money in the government that's going to allow you to buy tires for somebody, but with the donation that we received from this golf tournament, they were able to provide tires for that gentleman. What did that do for him? Allowed him to be able to find a job. What did that do for him? Open up the ability to no longer asking for a handout, but a handup. And so, again, the money you provide to us has just been outstanding, and to say you are one of the best community partners, we're really, really pleased to have you. Honda Classic does take care of our veterans as well, so I don't want to not say that they, they don't, but you guys are right here, just down the street, and you do a lot for our veterans. So on behalf of the VA, on behalf of those who have served in the military, I want to thank you and hope that there's another 12 to 15 more years coming around. So, and I have a little toast in this, in the honor.
We're coming down again, right?
Yes.
We have more to do.
I'd like to take a moment to recognize our sponsors. We couldn't have run the event without them. We have some representatives in the audience tonight that I'd like to ask to come up when they're called, and I'd like them to stay at the front for a photo with Council. Joining us tonight, representing our presenting sponsor, the Palm Beach Gardens Police and Fire Rescue Foundation, Mr. Erwin Edensen. Our Eagle sponsor, representing the Loman Law Group, Mr. Max Loman. Our Eagle sponsor, Alan Norton in Blue, couldn't be with us tonight. Our birdie sponsor, representing the Honda Classic, Mr. Andrew George. Our birdie sponsor, representing the TBC Corporation, Ms. Katie Frost. Our A sponsor, representing Urban Design Kill Day Studios, Mr. Ken Tuma. And our lunch sponsor, representing the Big Hurt Brigade, Mr. Chuck Detman. Thank you all. Our A sponsor, representing Urban Design Kill Day Studios, Mr. Ken Tuma. And our lunch sponsor, representing the Big Hurt Brigade, Mr. Chuck Detman. Thank you all.
We do everything well. Put your hand down. Okay, I'd like for an update on CIP and One Cent Sales Tax projects.
Having some technical difficulties. Good evening, Council. For the record, David Reyes, Community Services Administrator, Director of Emergency Management. And tonight, I'm going to provide you with an update on our capital improvement program. During fiscal year 1718, we completed 14 projects, which you see listed in front of you, and we added, for this fiscal year, 1819, we added an additional seven projects to our current capital improvement program. Those projects, also, you'll see those listed in front of you. So, what that means is that currently, we are working on 46 active projects for just over $62 million is what we have today that we're working on. Tonight, I'm just going to go over some of the major projects, the ones that are more significant, and also, we're going to talk a little bit and update you on the ones that are funded under the One Cent Sales Tax. So, the first project, this one is funded under the One Cent Sales Tax, is the new operations center. As you all know, this building is going to house our community services administrator, administration, public works, public services, parks and ground staff, all on the one roof. This project is currently under construction today. Here's some pictures that kind of show you the progress. May 18, this is getting ready on the site. And also, December 18, you see right there, the building is already being constructed. Here's another shot of the building. This building is currently on schedule, so it's scheduled to be completed by summer of 2019. Another project is city hall renovation and expansion. This project went out to bid and the bids came back, and unfortunately, they were higher than the allocated funding for the project. So, what staff did, we went back, sat down with the architect. We're looking to value engineering, redesigning, and other options, just to relook at the project and see other possibilities. We were able to make those changes and the project was rebidded. The bids came back. This time, they are within our budget amount. This is the new scope of work that we'll be doing on this project. This is going to be an expansion of approximately 17,000 square foot to the existing city hall building, first and second floor, and we will be renovating approximately 9,000 square foot to the existing footprint. This project is scheduled to be in front of you for consideration and approval next month at the February council meeting. We hope to start construction immediately after that and completion of the project will be spring of 2020. Also, as part of this bid, we included renovations to the police station, so there will be some work done under the same contract that you will see next month for your consideration and approval. And the scope of work for police department will be a renovation of approximately 6,000 square foot of the existing footprint. This will be completed by summer 2019. This is a smaller project. Will start right after the approval and project will be completed fairly quick. Another project, which is one of the projects that we're more excited about, is the Gardens North County District Park. As you all know, this project is under construction right now. This is also funded under the One Cent Sales Tax. And I just want to show you some pictures because I think they should depict the best way to see the progress on the project. What you're seeing here is a picture of the site early 2018. This is what the site looked at the beginning of 2018. By May 2018, clearing operations already started. By December 5 of 2018, just over 50 acres have been cleared and as you can see in here, sports light has already been installed. All the fields are under construction. We're already going vertical. This is less than one year and we already have done all this work. Today, two of the fields have been sprigged. Irrigation is already operating. We're growing grass on the first two fields. This is what the site looked like today. As you can see, right here, you see the parking lot has already been done. The 117 extension is substantially complete. This section right here is scheduled to be paved probably next week, so we are moving on schedule. Our plan is to have phase one, which include the first five fields, this area right here, by spring 2019, and the full park opening by summer 2019. But those, that's a schedule, that's what we target to complete this project. Immediately after the completion of District Park, we will be moving into Gardens Park expansion. As you know, this will be built where the existing soccer field exists today. Staff is already working on the site plan. That's almost finalized. We actually already got engineer drawings. We already working with contractor obtaining prices. So, the goal is that you may see some of those contracts coming in front of you between now and summer 2019 in preparations to start construction. Our goal is the minute the District Park is open and we move the soccer teams out to that field, we start construction. So, you may see some of those contracts coming in front of you in order to expedite the construction of this project. Also included with this project, we will be building a fuel island. This fuel station, right here on the southeast corner of the property, will be serving all the city fleet and is part of the whole operations center on the site. However, this will be built at the same time as we're building Gardens Park because right now, we can't do it because it will be interrupting the soccer facilities which are being in use right now. Another project is the extension and expansion to Johnson Dairy Road. This project is about 80% complete. The paving is completed, the parking has been done, curbing is done, the turning lane on military trail is also complete. Currently, we're working with FPNL coordinating the conduit finishing up to underground those power lines. So, those will all be underground, all the way up to the Neo Operations Center, which is part of the emergency management building because that's built to a category five. So, this undergrounding will make that whole process. At the same time, by undergrounding this, these lines right here serve our EOC and the 911 center, so it will make the system much stronger. Then after that, landscape and sidewalk and irrigation, we're expecting this project to be completed by spring of 2019. You'll know that this year, our city golf course received a lot of different projects. There was a lot of work, a lot of activity going on golf. I'm happy to report that most of those projects are completed and our residents are enjoying all those facilities, so I'm just going to briefly go over those. You know, our brand-new clubhouse is almost operational for close to a year. That project's completed. The existing parking lot was resurfaced. We did some drainage improvements and landscape has been improved. We also demolished the old cart barn that was located directly behind that. However, we recycle the concrete pad. We make some changes, modification, and as you can see here, this will be utilized for special events. We're hoping to start landscape installation around that area next week and be done with landscape around this whole area by the end of this month. This will be utilized for special events, weddings and different things on the back of the building. We also constructed a new training facility. This building is completed and open to the public as day. As you know, we also did a new parking lot expansion. This project is also completed, landscape done and is open to the public. It's been in use today. The new cart barn also is operational today. This project is complete. So, the next project, which was hoping to start construction April 2019, is going to be the maintenance building. This will be built just north of the existing cart barn. That project is scheduled to start construction April 2019 and be done by this summer of 2019. This will be a 12,000-square-foot building which house all of the maintenance staff, all of the equipment, and will replace the one that you see as you're coming into the building. So, that one will be demolished and the new one will replace. This building is also constructed to accommodate for future growth. So, not only will service the needs today at golf, but also all the future needs when we expand into our near property. And the last project, and it's perfect today after the presentation we just had, is the brand-new Tennis Center Clubhouse. This project also went out to bid and the bids came higher than anticipated what was allocated into the funding. Staff went back, worked together with the contractor and the engineer. We were able to do some value engineer to be able to bring this to a reasonable budget that we feel comfortable with. This project is scheduled to be in front of you, February, the next meeting, for consideration and approval, and we're hoping to start construction probably by April 2019 and be done by spring 2020. With that, I'll answer any questions.
Phenomenal. Thank you very much.
Madam Mayor, if I would just make a footnote here to everything that's going on with these $64 million projects. As mentioned to you once before, at the City of Palm Beach Gardens, we like to do things as a team and we put together a team, an internal team, to be able to take on these projects. And without adding additional staff, as most municipalities do to handle nothing but construction projects, David has taken on this responsibility along with Angela Brown. Stand up, Angela. I love embarrassing you. Stand up, Angela Brown. And one other, Jennifer Nellish. I don't think she's here, but the three of them have taken on the administration responsibilities of $64 million worth of projects. And in addition to that, they continue to do their day-to-day job. And in addition to that, David is also our emergency management director and directed and helped to put together our sister city efforts to be able to help with the Callaway situation that we dealt with. So, in his copious free time, I'm sure he spends a little time with his family, but not very much. But I just want to acknowledge the super amount of dedication and work that goes into these projects in addition to their additional jobs. It's no easy, but we, they get it done. I'm very proud of them. They do a wonderful job.
Wow. Well, next on the agenda is items of resident interest and board and committee reports. So, Carl, I'll start with you today.
I'm going to do the same thing I do pretty much every month. It's the same meetings we go to and you guys are going to go over it, so I'm just glad we're back to work. We've got a lot on our plate for the new year. Thank you, David and Angela, for you guys doing a great job. We see your product when you, I drive around at night, sometimes I look at the park, I look at what you're doing on my free time, and it's amazing how fast the city can get stuff done because of guys like you and great leadership like with Ron as our city manager. You guys make us look great. So, I would just like to get to work for the new year and let you guys take my time up and call the next person, Mayor.
Okay. So, I'll go this way. Mark, please.
Well, Happy New Year, everybody. Hope everyone had a safe and happy holiday season. Monday started and the on switch went on and everything started exploding, which was great. I had some nice events over the holidays with the senior luncheon. We were able to serve the staff breakfast, which was actually a lot of fun, although it made me hungry and I didn't get a chance to have breakfast that morning, but that's okay. Publix, the Alton Grand Opening, a beautiful facility, so if you haven't been by, please drive by and look at it. Something close to me, the Baskin Palmer Institute, had their groundbreaking for their macular degeneration clinic and research facility. Ballon Isles had their food truck dedication. That was a lot of fun as well. I wanted to, and then yesterday, we had our PGA POA meeting for those of us that live in PGA National and the corridor breakfast as well. So, other than that, we'll carry on the conversation.
For sure.
Well, I want to wish everybody a happy, healthy New Year. I got to spend a lot of quality time with my family over the holidays in Palm Beach Gardens, and I hope you did as well. There were quite a few holiday parties and get-togethers. The two things that I did that stood out the most for me, though, was on December 21, the Jingle Mingle, which was our breakfast for the employees of the city, and the council was privileged to be able to serve breakfast to any city employee who was able to stop by. And on December 25, my husband and I participated with Temple Israel as we do every year and served Christmas dinner at the St. George's Soup Kitchen in Riviera Beach, which always makes me realize how lucky we are to be where we are and to have what we have. And on that note, I will make one quick ask that anyone who can, with everything that we do donate already as a community, to please consider donating to the Palm Beach County Food Bank at this time. The SNAP food program that many families rely on is tenuous right now due to the government shutdown. They're funded through January. They're not sure what's happening in February. And the federal employees who never needed to rely on the food bank before may need some help if the shutdown continues much longer, so the food bank is going to be in need. You can go on their website, pbcfoodbank.org. The address is there and there's a donate button on there as well.
Matthew.
Well, first, I'm very fortunate to receive and listen to input from a number of wise and thoughtful people in our community. And over the course of the last month, a number of people have spoken with me and suggested that our city council should hold a workshop to discuss the implementation of a strategy to bring essential services housing to our city. Now, I've discussed this with our city manager and he's in agreement with this idea. So, I propose that we do hold a workshop to discuss the implementation of a strategy to bring essential services housing to our city. Additionally, the city's planning to retain a consultant to assist us in the establishment of policies and procedures that we can utilize to create a program that will incentivize the development of essential services housing. I also think that this is a good idea and I would propose that we do that as well. Turning briefly to a summary of the events that I attended during the last month, I attended the reopening of the new Homewood Suites, the Chamber of Commerce Breakfast. I worked at the seniors lunch with all of you. I attended the holiday party for the PBG YAA. I attended the opening of the Lois Pope Center at the Baskin Palmer. I attended the PBA luncheon. I attended the Hanukkah event at Chabad. We all served breakfast to our staff at Burns Road, which is just always fun to do every year, and I attended the residents' meeting at the PGA National. And with that, that concludes my report and suggestions.
Thank you, Matthew. Happy New Year, welcome all. Anybody getting tired of saying that yet? I think we have a couple more days to still say Happy New Year. But I had an interesting, yes, we all did the same things, the Alton, the Jingle Mingle, and there were a couple of standouts, as I would like to point out. I attended the Florida Chamber Foundation Growth and Infrastructure Summit. Say that three times fast. It was at Babcock Ranch, which is the largest solar panel farm in the world, and it uses autonomous vehicles to move people around the community. So, it's here. We just have to figure out a way and we have to work on how we're going to incorporate autonomous vehicles into our city because they are here. What else was interesting? Forum Club Luncheon honoring Jack and Barbara Nicholas for their many years of service to our community. Presented to the Singer Island Rotary Club on behalf of my dad, who asked me to do that. Hosted Legal Aid Society at the First Tee of the Palm Beaches, was on the Talk of the Palm Beaches radio program with Penny Pompey. And I would actually like to look ahead a little bit. So, I
But I had an interesting -- yes, we all did the same things, the Alton, the Jingle Mingle, and there were a couple of standouts, as I would like to point out. I attended the Florida Chamber Foundation Growth and Infrastructure Summit. Say that three times fast. It was at Babcock Ranch, which is the largest solar panel farm in the world, and it uses autonomous vehicles to move people around the community. So it's here. We just have to figure out a way, and we have to work on how we're going to incorporate autonomous vehicles into our city because they are here. What else was interesting? Forum Club Luncheon, honoring Jack and Barbara Nicholas for their many years of service to our community. Presented to the Singer Island Rotary Club on behalf of my dad, who asked me to do that. Hosted Legal Aid Society at the First T of the Palm Beaches, was on the talk of the Palm Beaches radio program with Penny Pompey. And I would actually like to look ahead a little bit. So I would like to invite you all to the following events that are going to occur in the next month. This Saturday will be the Fire Rescue Open House at Fire Station One here on Military Trail from 10 to 2:00. Sunday is the 17th anniversary of the Green Market, so please join us. Their celebration should start around 10 o'clock. Sunday, Carl and I will be dancing in the Dance for Justice event in Boca. So if you all want to laugh at us, please come to Meisner Park. We will be there at around 12:00. And did you get the video? Did you learn the dance yet? So if you want to watch him fall over his feet, and then I'll pick him up, then you can come.
Do you know the dance either?
I do. I watched the video today. I learned the dance. I watched the video.
But I don't know the dance.
Yeah, right. He's not telling the truth. Okay, Friday, January 18th, is the 20th Annual Arbor Day Celebration at Lake Catherine at our new honor park. Saturday, January 19th, I will make a complete and total fool of myself at the Student Aces Heroes versus Hot Shots Kickball Tournament, starting at 4:00, and that is at Roger Dean. Sunday, January 20th, will be the Mayor's Parade at the South Florida Fairgrounds, which is also Family Day. That'll be starting at 12:00 noon. Saturday, January 26th, will be the Miracle League Exhibition Game right here at Gardens Park. Ceremony starts at 1:30 with the game immediately following. And if you want to have your heartstrings pulled on, you need to show up there. And lastly, if you want to support the local melanoma foundation at their annual luncheon, I will be emceeing the event, and that is Monday, February 4th. So there's a lot on our horizon for the month, the rest of January and early February. Having said that, the next item on our agenda is comments from the public. I only have one comment card. Gervonta Edmonds, would you please join us? Name an address for the record.
I didn't put it in.
Name an address for the record. I've got it on here, but you've got to put it in.
4960 Haverhill Commons, West Palm Beach. Visitor, obviously. Well, good evening. First, thank you to the commission, the city clerk, city manager, for your time, for allowing me to speak here today. I only have three minutes, so I'll do my best to fit it all into three minutes. Well, I'm here basically just to simply say thank you for all the service and all the time and the commitment you all have given to Suits for Seniors. And just to back it up a little bit, for those who don't know what Suits for Seniors is, it is a high school program that is an eight-week high school program that mentors boys and girls their senior year. They teach them leadership skills, financial literacy, how to go to college, how to get a career, trade, or be an entrepreneur. And we also speak on domestic violence and mental health. And of course, at the end of those eight weeks of mentoring, we give them all brand-new, tailored suits and ties. For the young ladies, they get to choose between a skirt suit and a pants suit, and they get a pair of pearls as well. But I really just wanted to share my gratitude for you all, because we've been in existence for about three years now, and over those three years, we have about 500 graduates. Out of those 500 graduates, 90% of those students have gone off to college, and of course, 100% of them have graduated from high school. The remaining 10% either go off into the military, or they actually get into a trade. So we're very grateful that the outcomes of our students are very successful so far. I also want to recognize a lot of the departments with the city, such as the police and the fire. Specifically, the police, because they come in for our police relationships class, and they kind of basically give the kids the one-on-one on what they should know being in the streets, or how to deal with officers, and how to be calm and feel that they can be comfortable around officers. 90% of our kids say they feel like they have built a relationship with a police officer after they leave our class. And I got to thank Chief Step, Assistant City Manager, Chief -- wait, sorry. Wait, I did it all wrong. Assistant City Manager, Chief Step, and Chief Shannon, for their support for the police relationships class, because they are the ones that come in and speak to the kids about how to build better relationships. I also want to recognize Chief Brier? Is he there? Okay, Chief. He might have just stepped out. I also want to recognize Mr. Irwin for his work. I also want to recognize Mayor Marino, and I also want to recognize Candace Brown as well. All these people I've just named have came into the program at Palm Beach Gardens High School or at Dwyer High School to speak to these kids and make them feel like they can be comfortable around professionals, and they have all gained a relationship or a story behind meeting these people. So I thank you very much. And just to finish, because I have 23 seconds left, I just want to thank the Police and Fire Foundation. Over the existence of Suits for Seniors, you guys have given us $25,000, and I am sincerely grateful, and I think you all deserve a huge round of applause for everybody in this building, And that is my time. I sincerely thank you, and I just want you all to understand that you guys are truly improving the outcomes of these kids in these neighborhoods that we don't always get to see or touch, but we thank you for coming to our schools and making sure that they can be successful. So thank you all. I appreciate you.
Thank you.
Mayor?
Yes.
May I? I just want to let everybody know, not only is Jay a co-member of the Leadership Palm Beach County Class of 2019, but he is also a budding author, and his new children's book has just come out, and it's all about dreaming big and accomplishing what you set out to do in your life, and he's truly a role model for the young people in our community. So I just want to thank him for that.
Thank you, Council. I appreciate you. Thank you, Council.
Thank you very much. Next on the agenda, city manager's report.
Yes, Mayor, Council, I have three items for you. I'd like to call Cory Wilder up to the podium. While Cory comes up, I would be remiss if I didn't recognize one other employee in our audience, and that's our city engineer, Todd. Would you stand up, please? I just want to tell you, he didn't know this was coming either, but I just want to tell you that of all the projects that we have going on, I would describe our city engineer as the Tasmanian Devil of Palm Beach Gardens. He's involved in everything, every day, not only the construction projects that are going on, but also the routine things that happen here in the city. We're dealing with emergency issues created by other agencies and engineering that has to be done, and the review of the engineering plan. He has a couple of staff members out there that are just fantastic, and they do a wonderful job. But Todd is like the ever-ready bunny. He is everywhere, doing everything, and without him, David and Angela and these projects wouldn't be as successful as they are. Todd is our general contractor, basically, on all projects, and that's one of the reasons why our designs are good. That's one of the reasons why our cost estimates sometimes are good and not so good. But Todd sees to it that everything is done on the engineering side, along with everything else he does. And like I said, the ever-ready bunny or the Tasmanian Devil, because his schedule and his pace is just unbelievable, and he does everything. So for that, Todd, I appreciate everything that you do, and I recognize how busy you are and how valuable you are to this organization, and I thank you. Cory, if you would, please, our Director of Parks and Grounds.
Thank you, Ron. Good evening, Council. For the record, Cory Wilder, Director of Public Services. And as Ron mentioned, it's because of these great teams that I'm able to present this to you. We thought, what a better time than now to talk about Joseph Russo Multipurpose Fields and how we have benefited from the work that these individuals have done, 18 months in the working. So with that, I'll get started. This is Joseph Russo, Five Acres Multipurpose Field. Because of construction, Todd and David, the vision of the city manager, we put in eight inches of soil conducive to turf growth, which has allowed us to provide more play to our user groups. 18 months in, as you can see on the left-hand side, all of our other multipurpose facilities, we have replaced almost three acres of turf, 118,000 square feet. Russo, in the same timeframe, we have replaced zero. And a lot of that's due to, again, the construction. It's due to the size and the mobility that was thought of well before me, the vision of the city manager. Todd's created a lot of flexibility in that field, so we're able to move it around on a regular basis while letting our user groups continue to play. This is the Russo, this is the root zone at Russo. As you can see by my foot there, this root zone is about eight to nine inches in depth. And in contrast, this is the root zone at Clock. And because of this foundation, we're able to close less, play more, and grow a healthier turf stand. We've also worked hand-in-hand with the YAA, and our recreation department and Parks and Grounds Department have worked very well together in limiting our closures as much as possible. So our previous closures on all of our other multipurpose fields totaled 16 weeks. We closed twice for eight-week periods. Now we are closing for a total of 12 weeks, gaining a whole month of play for our kids. We close more frequently. We never close any more than two to three weeks in this entire 18 months. Again, no sod repairs. Our Parks and Grounds staff is able to do more work more often, again, creating a better turf stand, a healthier turf stand. And we're also able to accommodate the YAA on a more friendly basis to welcome more events and more tournaments and things of that nature. So I've included a few pictures to show you some of the benefits we've seen throughout the course of these last 18 months. This is in March, temperatures high of 69, low of 48, not conducive to turf growth, but you can see the field is still taking it very well. This is 10 days after we maintained it aggressively, verticuting and aerating, two weeks prior to its next closure. This is in May. It had already been open for two weeks, and one month prior to its next closure period. And as you can see, very little wear and tear from our user groups. Again, on May 22nd, just another view of the field. And a couple more photos later in the year, September, this is the final week of a three-week closure period. Again, very little remnants of wear and tear. Just another angle looking west. And again, we are able to close for shorter periods of time, again, allowing our kids to play more often, which has been a huge benefit to all of us. And this is one of our more damaged photos of Russo. And again, we're still not replacing any sod. Another angle from the same date. And this is during a two-week closure period. And again, during these closure periods, our Parks and Grounds staff is working diligently to aerate, verticut, top dress, and do as much as we can to continue play once we open up again. And again, thank you to city council for your support, Mayor, Ron, your vision, and the team you alluded to that's built these facilities that I get the pleasure of working with every day. So thank you.
I think we might have some comments from the council, so anyone want to jump in?
I need to make a comment. I mean, y'all know I've got two boys that play travel soccer, and they've been playing for years, and they're so spoiled that they get upset when they have to go to Clock Fields or Dyer. One of them is at Dyer all the time, one's at Mirasol, and they say, "Why can't we go to Russo Fields? Russo Fields are the best." And they truly are unbelievably great. Whenever they have a spare moment, that's where they go. When we have friends come to town, my brother was here from Minnesota, their three kids play soccer, and we went to Russo Field, and it was just like, they were amazed at how beautiful the fields are, and I said, "They're like this all the time." So kudos to the staff, kudos to Ron and all the planning. And when the rest of the district park looks like this, we are going to be the envy of, really, the entire state. Nothing anywhere I've been, other than some of the Disney fields in Orlando, come close to what we're building. So thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Cory. Anyone else? Great job, and staff, always, great job, great green.
I think it's just an illustration of while David, Angela, and Todd are over there making sure that the construction is going right. Someone has to manage it, and someone has to maintain it, and we got a good team together. Thank you very much, Cory.
And also, last point, hurry up, because everyone's really anxious for us.
We're moving just as fast as grass will grow. I'd like to bring Joe Correio up now, please. He's going to, our Deputy Community Services Administrator of Operation. A little-known fact Joe is going to make you aware of, which is an important fact, though.
Best-kept secret in the city.
Are you bringing us an autonomous vehicle?
So tonight, I'm going to do a brief overview, again, Joe Correio, Deputy Community Services Administrator. I'm doing a quick overview on our GovDeals.com. That's our online auction site for all of our city assets. Brief history of our auctions. Vice Mayor Wood, you may remember how we used to do auctions back in the day. We'd take all the police cars out of service. We'd stockpile them in a field. They'd sit there for a year and rot away. We'd come to bees and ants and dead batteries and flat tires, and then we'd try to rejuvenate them, and then we would have our auction every year.
We knew how to beat up a cop car.
Yes, we did. That's for sure. Yes, we did. So we would take these beat-up, weathered vehicles and try to get as much money as we could for them at an auction. Our auctions were carnival-like. We would hire an auctioneer. He would come out. We would literally have a hot dog vendor, and it would be an event. But we had to pay staff to do that. We had to compile lists. We had to compile and store all of these items that we wanted to sell. So the new trends, obviously, with online auctions would allow us to take our vehicles and any of our property and sell it right away. The benefit of that is, obviously, we are taking vehicles that are still operational. They still have a ton of value left in them, and we're able to capitalize on those values. So what it is, is an online auction. It's very similar to eBay, except it's open to all government entities. You have school boards selling on there, sheriff's offices, police departments, cities like us at Public Works. We don't pay a fee. All the fees are paid for by the buyer, so a 12.5% fee is actually assessed to the buyer. So that's how they make their money, and we're able to get top dollar for our vehicles. So how it helps the city and how it helps the residents, again, it's immediate sale. I've actually taken people out of vehicles, taken the decals off, and within an hour have photographed it and have it online for auction, and within a week, it's gone. So we're getting money back very quickly. It reduces our inventories. We're pulling cars off the insurance rolls and saving some money that way. We're allowing public access to all of our tax-paid properties, so they can buy that if they're interested in that. So who sells and what sells? The primary sellers are Public Services. We sell all the heavy equipment, automobiles. We actually sell for all the other departments. So if a police department or recreation has surplus property they want to get rid of, Public Services actually sells it for them. IT sells all their integrated electronics and telephones and servers and printers, and they have their own account where they sell those items. First item we sold on GovDeals was by IT in January of 2013. Since then, we've sold 630 items, and we just realized a $1,056,000 in sales over the last five years. We never would have gotten that without the online. The audience is nationwide, so we're selling to people in California, Pennsylvania. We sell them all over the country. So with that, is there any questions? Or?
That $1 million goes back into the general fund, by the way.
Yes, yes. Not to me.
That's fabulous. Thank you for sharing that with us. Now, who are the buyers?
Everyone and anyone. Private entities, businesses, other cities actually buy equipment that's better than what they have. So it's everyone and everyone. It's a great, great audience, very vast.
Wonderful.
Yes.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Joe. Next would be Crystal Gibson, our Neighborhood Services Director, going to give us an update on code enforcement and the CAS program for rehabbing some of the houses in the community.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Happy New Year. Again, for the record, I'm Crystal Gibson, Neighborhood Services Director. So just to give a couple of updates, some before-and-after pictures. So just to give a couple of updates, some before-and-after pictures of a couple of recent code cases that we had before the end of the year last year. This is a home off of Bellwood Street. It needed some painting, had some mildew. This is a couple of pictures of how the house looked up close. And afterwards, the house was painted, looks beautiful. As oftentimes occurs in code enforcement, homeowners aren't really very happy when they are approached by us to say, "Hey, could you please paint your home?" Some complaints. But afterwards, the homeowners were very happy. They were actually saying, "Oh, it's a project we've been meaning to get to. Thanks for the push. We're very happy how it came out." And they're very proud afterwards, and so are their neighbors. Very great curb appeal. Another home off of Steeplechase Drive. Some work being done without permits, kind of sitting there. And afterwards, they got the permits that they needed. The windows were placed in, a big difference, very much appreciated by the neighbors there as well. On December 8th, we had a CAS project, a Community Action Support Team, which is a collaboration of people from different departments. They come together. We help residents in need. As you can see from the pictures, very great day, very fun day with staff members coming out to paint from all different departments. And they brought their families. You see Ally's family with the little boys. We partnered with the Solid Waste Authorities Paint Your Heart Out Program. They donated the paint and the painting supplies. At this home, we have a couple of residents, a woman and her daughter, that needed help. So the city, this is a code case where the city abated the property multiple times. We went to the property to remove bees. And the city also provided community development block grant funds to repair the driveway, repair the roof, infatia, sod. And so this is just a couple of before and after pictures here. Before, you see overgrown landscaping that before we painted was taken care of by volunteers from Christ Fellowship. Another example of a great collaboration of entities. And afterwards, it was cleaned up and painted. Also, another example, we had a number of minor repairs that were done to the house and preparing for painting the house. Our city building official, Scott Danielski, took his time to do some of those repairs. And also, as you see, we needed some pressure washing. And that was done by M&amp;H Pressure Cleaning, which is a company that's owned by Miles Held of our Palm Beach Gardens Fire Rescue. So they're here, and we really appreciate their time being donated to this project as well. You see afterwards how it really picked up the home from the street. Also, you see the asphalt repair that was done there. And that's another before with the overgrowth and the asphalt repairs that were needed. And afterwards, it looks a lot better. It's the sweet celery color that we all know and love. And afterwards, everyone couldn't jump in the picture. Some people had to leave. But the mother and daughter there wanted to take a picture with us. And they are just very happy and appreciative of everything that the city was able to do for them and wanted to say thank you. And so, we also thank you, the staff, just being able to do things like this in the community. It's a beautiful thing, and we appreciate the opportunity. That's all.
Thank you, Crystal. That concludes my report for tonight.
Okay, question. I know we talked about it at the last meeting. What do we have to do to change the name of Burns Road Rec Center to the Burns Road Community Center?
It's already done, so it's being finalized very shortly.
Perfect.
She's already changed the letterhead and things like that, so.
While we do so much for the community over there, it really needs to be reflected. So thank you for doing that so quickly.
It was originally the Burns Road Community Center. And somewhere along the line, it got changed to Recreation Center, so we're putting it back.
All right. So, oh my heavens. We are now onto Page 2 of our council meeting, which is the Consent Agenda. Okay, may I have a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda?
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
May I have a second, please?
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, that was quick. Next, our public hearings. So let me read our... Tonight, we are holding quasi-judicial hearings on the following case. Resolution 3, 2019, Avenue Holding Site Plan Approval. Resolution 4, 2019, Building Identification Signage for the Devasta Towers. This means that the City Council is required by law to base its decisions on the evidence contained in the record of this proceeding, which consists of the testimony at the hearing, the materials which are in the official city file on this application, and any documents presented during this hearing. The Council is also required by law to allow cross-examination of any witnesses who testify tonight. Cross-examination may occur after the staff, the applicant, and other participants have made their presentations and will be permitted in the order of the witnesses' appearance. It is necessary that anyone who testifies at the hearing remain until the conclusion of the hearing in order to be able to respond to any questions. If you plan to testify this evening or wish to offer written comments, please fill out a comment card and give it to the clerk now. The city clerk will now swear in all persons who intend to offer testimony this evening on any of these cases.
Do you solemnly swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help you God?
Thank you. Okay, so, first on our agenda, Ordinance 26. May I have the clerk read the title, please?
Ordinance 26, 2018, An Ordnance to the City Council of the City of Palm Beach Gardens, Florida, Annexing Pursuant to a Petition for Voluntary Annexation, Two Parcels of Real Property Comprising a Total of 23.48 Acres, More or Less, Located Along Northlake Boulevard Between Grapefruit Boulevard and Avocado Boulevard And Between 130th Avenue North And 120th Avenue North In Palm Beach County, Florida. That is more particularly described herein, declaring that the owner of the real property can sense to be annexed hereby, amending Article 2 of the City Charter by redefining the corporate limits, Providing for Transmittal to the Florida Department of State, Florida Department of Economic Opportunity, the Florida Governor's Office, and Palm Beach County, Providing a Conflicts Clause, a Severability Clause, and Authority to Codify, Providing an Effective Date and Further Purposes.
Thank you. I will open the hearing. Has anything changed since the first reading?
No, Madam Mayor, there have been no changes since first reading.
Does anyone need a presentation? I have no comment cards, so I will close the hearing. May I get a motion and a second to approve, please?
I'll make a motion to approve Ordinance 26, 2018.
May I have a second? No, thank you, Carl. All those in favor? Aye. Motion carries. Thank you very much. Okay. Ordinance 1, 2019. May I have the clerk read the title, please?
Ordinance 1, 2019, An Ordnance to the City Council of the City of Palm Beach Gardens, Florida, Amending the City of Palm Beach Gardens Budget for the Fiscal Year Beginning October 1, 2018 And Ending September 30, 2019 Inclusively Providing a Conflicts Clause, a Severability Clause, and Authority to Codify, Providing an Effective Date and Further Purposes.
Thank you. I will open the hearing. Hello, Alan.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of the council. For the record, Alan Elwens, Finance Administrator. And Ordinance 1 before you tonight is the typical beginning of each fiscal year budget amendment that we do, where we're basically doing several things, including re-appropriating balances of open purchase orders and also balances on uncompleted projects from one year into the next. We also are adjusting our beginning budgeted fund balance in line with our end-of-year, prior-year fund balances after we've closed out the year-end. We also have a couple other recommended budget amendments that we'll go through in a second. As far as the total amounts, the total dollar value of purchase orders and capital improvement projects that are being carried forward from last year, it's about $39.2 million. The total actual number of projects being carried forward is 4... Just one item to note, as far as that $39.2 million, again, that is the money that is unspent. It's not the original budget for these projects. So when David mentioned earlier $60 million, he's looking at total budget of the initial project, plus this number here does not include current year new appropriations. So I just wanted to point that out. As far as specific projects, these are balances from last year. No big surprises here. The largest three projects are one-cent sales surtax projects with Gardens North District Park, $11.8 million, City Hall Expansion at $6.6, and the Operations Center at $5.4 million, being the largest project balances that are being carried over from last year. As far as other budget amendments, as far as adjusting our fund balances to the actual ending last year balances, the most significant adjustment is in the general fund, where we realized an increase in our Budget Stabilization Reserve of about $4.5 million. We also are recording anticipated increase in the sales proceeds for the sale of the Public Works Building. We had budgeted $2.2 million. Based upon the offer that we have on the table right now, we estimate that we would receive a net proceeds of about $3,580,000. So we have $1.38 million additional to allocate into our budget. We also have the sale of the Hilltop Property of $865,000. So those are all additional sources that we would be adding into the reserves. We have a couple of recommended allocations from the Budget Stabilization Reserve. The first is $1.6 million, which would be allocated to accelerate the fire rescue training tower at Richard Road. We also have a transfer of that additional proceeds from the sale of the Public Works Building of the $1.38 million to the Tennis Center project that we've heard about earlier this evening. We also have $349,000 that's being requested to cover shortfall in revenue from State Chapter 175 money that would go to the fire pension fund. And the last item is $355,000, recommended transfer to the Road Impact Fund, which would be used to cover, when we closed out the year, our estimates for impact fee revenues were below what we had budgeted. So we need to transfer $355,000 to make that fund whole. The only other significant other adjustment in this budget amendment is in the Rec Impact Fund, where we are recognizing $2.5 million that was previously being held in escrow due to the Alton Park Rec Impact Fee Agreement that was recently terminated. So now that that was terminated, we can book that $2.5 million out of escrow and show it as revenue. And we would take that money and allocate it to the baseball expansion project. If you recall, we had taken that, originally, that was a one-set project. We took the $2.5 million there, allocated it up to the Gardens District Park to supplement the funding there. So this just basically, in essence, replaces, replenishes that $2.5 initial allocation. So as far as the general fund reserves, after those recommended adjustments, the balance in the Budget Stabilization Reserve in this current year budget, if you recall, was around $670,000. After those adjustments that we just went over, that's an increase of about $3.1 million. So in this year's budget, the budget stabilization would be about $3.77 million. As far as the unassigned reserve balance, it stays the same, at $22.7 million. And based upon 2018 expenditures, that's 25.7% of last year's expenditures, which exceeds our threshold, our policy of 17%. A couple of items to note, though, as far as budget stabilization. As you know, we're currently in the negotiation process with IAAF. We also have the PBA contracts that will be coming up later this year. So whatever impacts we realize from those agreements, you know, are not factored into these numbers yet. And then also, as far as the unassigned reserve balance, again, we're not factoring in any kind of impacts, potential settlement costs due to the Sears litigation. So I just wanted to point those two items out to council. And with that, staff recommends approval of Ordinance 1, 2019. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. I have no comment cards, so I will close the hearing. May I have a motion and a second to approve, please?
I'll make a motion to approve Ordinance 1, 2019 on first reading.
I'll second.
Thank you. I'll bring it back for discussion. Rochelle, any questions?
No, I just think it's amazing that we have so much going on, and we're offering our residents so much. And we've got a healthy city, and it's good going forward. It's a good way to start the new year.
Matthew.
Great report, Alan, as always.
Mark, anything? Carl, Mark?
No, just grateful that the Budget Stabilization Fund is higher than the $600,000. It's always good to have that fund higher than that for unanticipated expenses that we hopefully won't have, but we'll find out soon. Thank you.
You know what I think is cool, Alan? It's like how us five can understand you better every year that we're up here. And I know the first couple of years, while our eyes were spinning around, and I went over it four or five times with whoever I could and was sitting in your office. Now we're like, "Yeah, it looks good. That's awesome. It's perfect." And it's easier to absorb. So, and your presentation makes it easy, especially with the budget. But thank you for a great job.
I constantly ask about reserves, and so I'm just going to bring up something that happened at the PGA Property Owners Association meeting. Their auditors got up, and they spoke about reserves and how their reserves were about 17%. You and I have talked about our threshold being 17%. I just want to let everybody know that even though we have $22 million in our reserves, which is the equivalent of about 25% of our operating budget, basically, that equates to three months of operating expenses if we have a catastrophe. And if, since we are AAA rated, that's about what it'll take us to get a loan to go through. So I applaud the city for its foresight into keeping it at this rate, at this amount that we have. And going forward, I hope that we have enough in our Budget Stabilization Fund going through that we never have to touch our reserves. So, thank you very much for all that you do, Alan, and Mary, too. Thank you. Okay, so, let me go back a couple pages here. We do have to vote. Any further discussion?
No.
No, ma'am.
All those in favor? Aye. Thank you very much.
Let's do it.
Next on our agenda. Resolution 3, 2019. May I have the clerk read the title, please?
Resolution 3, 2019, A Resolution of the City Council of the City of Palm Beach Gardens, Florida, Approving a Site Plan for 416 Single Family Homes on Parcels A1, A2, A3, and A4 That Total 230.49 Acres Within the Avenue Plan Community Development PCD That Is Generally Located on the North Side of Northlake Boulevard, East of Grapefruit Boulevard, West of Bay Hill Drive, and South of Beeline Highway, As More Particularly Described Herein Providing Conditions of Approval, Providing Waivers, Providing an Effective Date and Further Purposes.
I will open the hearing, and I will ask for ex parte communication. Anyone have an ex parte? I think we all did. So for the record, I believe everyone here had an ex parte communication.
I did as well. I spoke with Ken. I spoke with the people from Avenue.
That means everyone.
That means everyone, yes. We all have. Thank you. And Ken, have you been sworn in?
I have.
Name and address for the record?
Sure. Good evening, Ken Tuma. My address is 610 Clemata Street, West Palm Beach, Florida, 33418. I have been sworn in, Madam Mayor. And if I may begin?
Please.
Thank you. So, good evening again. On behalf of the Avenue Group, we're very proud to be here tonight. And the reason why we're here is for Site Plan Number 1. It's an exciting project, and a lot of things are happening. Tonight, unfortunately, it's going to take about 20 minutes for me to get through the material that I need to get through this evening. No need to leave. So it's basically broken up into three parts. The first part is kind of a quick update on what's happening with Avenue. The second part, which is actually very exciting, is the future of Avenue, so we can see what's happening. Not everybody has had the opportunity to see what I've seen for the last seven years. The owners are prepared tonight to show what they believe the future of Avenue is going to look like. And we're going to walk through the entire future master plan. And then finally, of course, the item that is in front of you, which is Site Plan Number 1, which is very similar to the project that you approved a few months ago, Site Plan Number 2, which was age-restricted for 469 units. This one is a market-rate unit. While I'd like to give a little deference to the students who were here before, the material that I'm going to put before you today is not rocket scientist, and I'm certainly not anywhere near that, but I may bore you more. So, let's get started. So as you are familiar, the subject site is located about six miles west of I-95 on Northlake Boulevard. It's 4,763 acres. Site Plan Number 1 is identified in the bottom right-hand side of the site, Site Plan Number 1. in the bottom right-hand side of the, of the site, Site Plan Number One. The original approval, the master plan approval is in front of you. The P C D has been approved, and all the items indicated on the left-hand side of the screen are approved for the subject site. As you can see, Site Plan Number One will fly in down here. You'll note that Site Plan Number Two is already on the site because it has been already previously approved. So what is the progress of Avenir? Where are we with the development of Avenir? What's happening? Well, first thing, you've approved Site Plan Number Two. You did it a few months ago. That was age restricted. That is under contract. There will be model homes submitted next week to the, to the city staff. That is moving forward very quickly. The boundary plant, just about ten minutes ago on the consent agenda, you approved the boundary plant, the first really big step for Avenir. This is the beginning of the process to allow the land to be subdivided. Now, it's important to note though, as part of the boundary plant and is also part of the items that have already been given to the city, consistent with the original development order, I used to have a slide that said, "Avenir will be donating." Well, now, Avenir has donated the following items. A hundred and fifteen acres of park and civic site has been donated to the town. The fifty-acre economic development parcel has been donated. The next two items will be coming down the road, a fifteen-acre annex for, or fifteen acres for a City Hall Annex, and then also Seacoast for two and a half acres for a Seacoast utility facility. So those items, the two major ones are complete. The other two will come forward as we move forward of Site Plan, indicating where those will go more specifically. It's also important to remember the ecological component of Avenir. Avenir, fifty-one percent of the entire area is dedicated for ecological restoration and open space, and forty-nine percent is for development. But the important thing to note here is, over two thousand acres of that, of that parcel is already restricted. We have entered into a restriction with South Florida Water Management District. We haven't done the entire preserve yet because up in the north, we're still working with C S X on the exact location of where the railroad crossing will go. But I want to assure you, there is a restriction on that property for preserve that is in place today, held by South Florida Water Management District. And all the other required approvals are identified on the screen in front of you. We also have in the audience our scientist, Mr. Weinberg, who's the environmental consultant, can answer any question you may have. Big picture, we have South Florida Water Management District. We have the Army Corps Department, everything established going through the process. So one thing we forget, what does that all mean, and this will be my last slide on this item, is there is an existing today, a fairly significant publicly-held and privately-held land that's in conservation. This big A right here in the middle is four thousand seven hundred and sixty-three acres, which is Avenir. It looks like it's a plug in the system. Well, it is. With that placement of the conservation area, you'll notice that area becomes green. And then you'll see, a hundred thousand acres of land is interconnected by that dedication of the north side. A very significant benefit, and done today. So what is the future vision for Avenir? This is the more exciting part. I've got about five to six slides on the vision. So as you walk through, this is the proposed conceptual master plan for Avenir. Now, it is conceptual. Been working in this city and other cities for a very long time. Whenever we show a plan that's fifteen to twenty years, the only thing I can promise you about this plan is that it will change. But, the intent is here. So I'm going to identify a few items on the plan. Here in front, identified in this oval is the entry feature. This item is actually in front of you tonight for approval, but it's what sets the stage for Avenir, so I'm using it as a tee-off for the future vision of Avenir. This is the view of what the entry feature is proposed to look like. Again, an item in front of you tonight, we'll go into more detail when I get to that component of the site. But you'll notice the, the stone, the oolite, the design, the intent to really make sure when you come down North Lake Boulevard, you know you're still in the City of Palm Beach Gardens and you're entering Avenir. This is kind of a view. We've twisted that three-dimensional camera a little bit so you can get an idea of what the landscape program will look like along North Lake Boulevard. The next vision, the next thing on the right and left are residential parcels, which we'll get into those details. But I want to walk you to the Recreation Center. This will probably be coming before you in April. Will probably be coming before you in April. It's a Recreation Center. It's twelve thousand feet. Kind of give you a frame of reference, that recreation facility of twelve thousand feet is similar to the clubhouse at Evergreen. It'll have eight tennis courts, six pickleball courts. Oops, I jumped a couple slides. I'll come It'll have six pickleball courts and several, and several other facilities, a dog park and other items that we're working through. It's twelve thousand feet. And this is a view of it from a Recreation Center, a view from a perspective of what that's going to look like. That will serve the communities as a recreational parcel. Now, I'm going to jump back a couple slides. The next thing that we get a lot of questions about, what are the spine roads of Avenir going to look like? So, you've already approved this, but I'm going to walk you through because it impacts every roadway in the, in this, in the entire parcel, major roadway where there are spines, spine road connection points. So this is a spine road. Last time in front of you, I showed a cross-section. I don't think I did a very good job explaining the cross-section. It wasn't as clear. So we had a three D render, a three D renderer do it in a little bit better fashion, so we'll be able to articulate to everyone what it looks like. Starting on the right-hand side of the screen, you'll notice the homes in the background. Buried within this landscape is a six-foot-high, a concrete post and panel wall. Then there's an eight-foot sidewalk. That's a multimodal sidewalk intended for people who are walking, probably bike-riding. And then there's the four-foot bike lane within the roadway. That's for the serious bike riders who know what they're doing. And then there's two lanes of traffic, a sixteen-foot-wide median in the center of the site, or in the center of the roadway, two lanes of traffic, another four-foot bike path, a twelve-foot cart path on the other side. That's on purpose. We intend this community to be interconnected by bicycles and cart paths, and it's twelve feet wide. And it's a very nice amenity. For a frame of reference, think about that, that parkway in front of Mirasol is a good one to think about. That's about twelve feet wide also. And that's the intent for this. And then as you convey further to the west on this slide, you could see the six-foot wall. We removed a little bit of landscaping so you can get an idea of what's happening back in here. But that's a six-foot wall. This is the cross-section. This is the three D model that will be for the entire length of the spine roads within Avenir. Here's another view, kind of a different, different look, from a different perspective. You can notice the live oak trees, kind of the oval in the middle, and then all the cars and the different landscaping, the fountains in the background. The idea of this is to make sure you understand that the owners have very high-level standards for this community. In fact, your city staff and the owners have come up to where the landscaping, you have a code requirement for landscaping, and it's a fairly heavy code requirement in the municipality we work in. This particular project will be two times that, or two times the required code. So a very significant amount of landscaping in the subject site. So, continuing down the road of the master plan, the Recreation Center, which I just talked about, let's click through those. As you drive around the, as you drive around the road, as I said a little earlier, the civic site, which is the City of Palm Beach Gardens Recreation Area, that's been dedicated. I know the city's working hard at figuring out the future for that site. The Economic Development Site, located here, already dedicated, looking for its first user. Hopefully someone will come along, very exciting to use that. And then one thing on the left-hand side is a golf course. We're proposing a golf course. Is a very high-end golf course. For those of you who are golfers, and I think we may have a golfer or two up there, this is being proposed as a core golf course, not a developer's golf course, where you have homes, golf, you have the holes, and then you have the lots in between. This is a core golf course. Kind of think like Old Palm. Old Palm has kind of that core golf course. And in the same design theme, there are about two hundred and twenty-eight homes within the community of this golf course. In, in the frame of reference, of course, Old Palm is about three hundred, well, it's approved for three hundred and thirty, but I think it ended up being three hundred and sixteen if I remember right. So kind of the same design concept. And just a quick look at the golf course. This doesn't show the elevations, the lakes, but just an idea that this is what we're proposing today. The ownership group told me today that the, that there is a person very interested in this golf course and working very diligently on it. But again, we can't predict the future, but we believe that this has very high likely success in moving forward. And here's a view of what that entrance would look like. They have some pretty neat design characteristics for their entranceway. The next slide is the Town Center. The Town Center is really going to be kind of the heartbeat of this project. The intent of the Town Center is to be the gathering area. It includes many features, including a Crystal Lagoon, and I'll get into that and explain to you what that means later. But also, it has townhomes. It has recreation. It has commercial facilities. And let me walk you through some characteristics. This is a Town Center. It's so fresh, the plan's still black and white, but it'll get colored as we move forward through the process. But just to give you a few, feel of the character of the Town Center, this is a design that's being proposed from a character standpoint. More to come. Stay tuned on that. But rest assured, that'll be a very nice, important feature of Avenir, and an important feature for the acreage, and an important feature for our friends in Ibis.
We'll give you five dollars.
Thank you. So the Crystal Lagoon, what is that, Ken? It's something new. It's not new to being constructed. They've been around a long time. But what it is, in essence, is a very clear water pool area that is very significant in size. And let me show you a picture of what it looks like. These are Crystal Lagoons. They are lightly filtered and very clear water and are a very unique amenity. And we are proposing two of them. One of them in the northwest corner in a residential area, and the other one, which I'm excited about, which will be the one in the Town Center District, which will have a beach club. And our intent and our design will be to have restaurants, a hotel, and other items around the Crystal Lagoon. So this is the future. And this future, these, this particular item, future is now. We are working very diligently on this, and I would suspect a submittal will be coming in very soon on a portion of the Crystal Lagoon. It's a very exciting feature and a very neat feature to the community.
Where the mountains come from?
We, sorry?
Mountains on the back, the previous slide?
Well, you know, I, I kind of think that one is Baja right in. So, we can't bring those in. However, on the golf course, we are, we are bringing in a lot, we do have a lot of fill on the golf course, making some good grade changes. So on the left-hand side of the screen in the oval in front of you is the agricultural area. We're still working on that, but we believe will happen, and there'll be a farm-to-table concept there in the agricultural area. The conservation area, I know I said this earlier, of that two thousand acres that's already been dedicated, we are working very hard with a woman named Joanne Davis and our environmentalist, Mr. Weinberg, and we're preparing a pathway system through there, which we're very excited about. And it'll be a very nice hiking trail for those of you who are, who are moderate hikers. There'll be the one-mile one. And for those who are a little more serious, it'll be much more significant. And finally, hopefully, I'm, I'm a hiker, and hopefully the Florida Trail, which kind of has its dead spot, will have the opportunity to go through there in the future. So on to the matter for tonight, Site Plan Number One. I need about five or seven minutes of your time, and I'm going to walk through Site Plan Number One. So here's Site Plan Number One in front of you on the screen in the southeast corner of the subject site. It is a mix of residential units. The residential units are a mix of, excuse me, seventy-foot-wide lots, sixty-foot-wide lots, fifty-foot-wide lots, and eighty-foot-wide lots. And they're all a hundred and forty feet deep. So I'm going to blow up into two of the sections and not drag you through all four. But if you have any questions, we can go in. I have the details of all the other ones. First one we're going to look at is Site Plan, or is Parcel A one. Here it is kind of blown up in visual for you. As identified earlier, it's seventy by a hundred and forty feet. There are ninety-eight residential units in that area being proposed. Those residential areas, obviously, those residential, these lot lines here. The community, the community has some unique design features. Kind of blowing up into the entrance, so you kind of get a feel of the character of what's happening. You'll notice the entranceway. There's a monumentation sign. That monumentation sign, by the way, will come back before you as part of another, a part of the approval process for the, for the architecture. There is a gate here. There is a call box in this area. These are, these are paver bricks going through here. This is a male kiosk. There's a park in this area. There is a playground area for children. There are trellis facilities within this area. One of the things about the Avenir Design Guidelines, the Avenir's Design Guidelines required a three-quarter acre park within twelve hundred, within a quarter mile of every home. The Design Guidelines require that. Your city code does not require that, but the Design Guidelines require that. So when I say we meet code on the park requirement, we meet code for the above-standard Design Guidelines that are part and parcel with this subject site. The entryway in this case will be Royal Palms. Here's a little more blow-up of what's happening. You can see the trellis feature, happy children playing, and then of course, the lake area with the fountain behind it. The street trees in this particular parcel will be Japanese, Japanese blueberries, Japanese blueberry trees. And one thing I want you to take a note, as you look at this site plan, you'll see the street trees. You'll notice these medians, a lot of care went into trying to figure out and making sure that the roads had curves in them, that everything was a little bit unique, that we thought about where the lights went from the cars as they drove by, and to make sure that there's little breaks and open space. So there are no back-to-back lots. You'll see here, there's separation buffer. In fact, as of today, there are no back-to-back lots in Avenir. And also, I'd like to add that there are also no zero lot lines within these site plans also. On the west side of the site, there's a forty-foot, a forty-foot buffer. That's adjacent to the Town Center. That forty-foot buffer starts with a four-foot-high berm, and then a six-foot-high wall, and then a significant amount of landscaping on top of that buffer. And that was done on purpose because we recognize at the commercial center, there'll be more uses and more potential distractions with lighting and things like that. So the forty-foot buffer was very important to the purchaser of this site and also to the developer. Site Plan A four, kind of the same concept, you know, or the same, I'm going to walk you through the same series of slides. This one, this particular project is eighty-foot-wide lots, and they're a hundred and forty feet deep. It has continuous sidewalk connections to the clubhouse. So up here on the north, this is where Future Avenir Clubhouse is going to go. There's a connection point through here that allows for people to, to be connected to the clubhouse. This is a view of the park, the male kiosk, the entry features. There are date palms on, as the, as the primary landscape component on the entry. A little bit more detail on the park, showing the trellis features. There are walking paths, dog waste stations, bicycle racks throughout the area. In this particular project, the proposed street tree is a live oak. And again, to walk you through some of the details, eighty-foot-wide lots, I didn't mention on the previous site plan, we have spread out on-street parking. Not required, but we've added additional on-street parking. You can see it where, where my mouse is. It's hard to see at this scale. But we've spread out on-street parking throughout the project to allow for guests in overnight parking, to have additional parking spots outside of the driveway, and of course, the roadway in front of those lots. That is consistent through all four items that are in front of you tonight. We are requesting two waivers for this site. The first waiver is a request to allow for sidewalks and features to be in the lake maintenance track. This is a consistent waiver that you'll see throughout the City of Palm Beach Gardens. We do have the minimum required clear zone, but in some areas, we wanted to encroach a little bit to allow for some neat design features. The second waiver, the second waiver is a request to designate a specific rear lot access. In essence, we're requesting that you reduce the setback on one side for equipment. But I want to walk you through that in detail. What we're really saying to you is, on one side of the house, we don't want to place any equipment. So there would be no equipment on this side of the house, but we would like to place it all on one side. Therefore, this one side is entirely clear for the future. If someone wants to do something, build a pool, whatever it may be, because typically you get equipment on both sides. What we're doing is we're kind of setting the standard in Avenir and for all the future homeowners to eliminate future problems. So keep one side clear, allow us to encroach a little bit on the other side, and then we could place all that equipment on one side. It's worked throughout the city, and I think it's a good design concept, and I think it allows you to eliminate problems in the future as it requires the equipment to be all on one side. As identified earlier, we have a significant amount of benefits that would certainly support this waiver request, including the doubling of the landscaping and the, and the landscape requirements. Now, at the Planning and Zoning Board, ladies and gentlemen, I did not do a good job of explaining some items. I would like to take about five minutes this evening, or maybe seven, and walk through those items in detail and explain to you the, the items in detail. those items in detail and explain to you the items in detail. The other thing I'd like to let all of you know, we have met individually with almost all of the planning and zoning boards, we have two, planning and zoning board members, we have two more to go, but we have met with all of them individually and had the opportunity to show them this vision, because when you're in these type of meetings, you typically don't get this amount of time to really show your vision. So I'd like to walk you through some details and clarifications of a couple items. The first one is the design standards and architecture. We had a comment about architecture that we weren't showing architecture at this time. That is very true. We know that there are several potential buyers for this subject site and they have their own vision of architecture and design, but Avenir has a set of design guidelines. Those design guidelines set the rules for the road and those design guidelines are all above your city code. But what we're going to do with architecture, which we agreed on, I believe it is condition number two, if I recall correctly, we are required to, and I know some are in the room tonight, the potential contract purchasers are required to bring forth their architecture to you and the plant, to staff, to DRC, to the planning and zoning board, and then to you. You will have the opportunity to focus on each individual architecture style for individual pods. We think it's the best use of time for everyone because ultimately, the builders are the one who will be responsible for providing what they want on the site. And that will be coming before you. I know that next Wednesday, one of our contract purchasers will be making their first submittal of model homes on this site. Lot drainage. Lot of conversation about drainage. First and most important to know, we need all the criteria of South Florida Water Management District. It's been reviewed by yourself, it's been reviewed by your city engineer, it's been reviewed by the CDD engineer, it's been signed and sealed by our professional engineer and of course, approved by South Florida Water Management District. Bottom line, the lots will drain correctly. This is a little bit different, the lots will split, meaning portion of the water, if you're adjacent to a lake, will drain to the lake, part will go to the front. If you're not by a lake, it drains to the front of the house. Stacking. This was a really good conversation at the planning and zoning board and it reminded me of that I need to do a better job of communicating what both the rules are, but also what it means. The city of Palm Beach Gardens has a rule which says you need to have 100 feet of stacking to the call box. And that 100 feet is measured from the curb line, but that doesn't mean that's all the room that's available for cars. In particular, in every one of these communities, they are, it is a gated community, but those gates at a minimum are 150, 160 feet back from the line, from the access point. Also, there are two lanes of traffic, just like I know some of you live in gated communities, those two lanes of traffic, one will be on a FOB system, which the residents will drive right in, and the other one will be for residents. So there's a considerable amount of stacking available within those areas and the measurement to the gate is 160 feet. Connections, interconnectivity, and kinda the general big picture of the project. The interconnectivity in the site is intended, this is a hybrid community. Yes, a portion of, or yes, the communities are gated. Our lots are in gated communities, but the balance of the project is open to anyone. So for example, we have a smaller parcel of 98 units, but then we have the spine road, the town center, the recreation, the conservation area, all interconnected by a whole bunch of, a whole bunch of pathways. And I put this slide back up because it's important to note, on one side of the road is an eight-foot sidewalk, there is a bicycle path, a bicycle path, and a 12-foot golf cart path. The intent of that is to connect the entire parcel and allow people to go to the recreation center, to go to the town, to be able to park and walk out on the conservation area with their golf cart. But that's just a day in a life for a resident. The residents that are ones behind the gate, it's also for the general public, will have access to our town center. They'll be able to use these driveways, or excuse me, be able to use these sidewalks and connection points. And as you can see, just here on the first site plan, identified in red, is every connection point there is. And there's a couple key ones, I wanna make sure we show you. The entrance points to both the communities that we discussed are here. There's a secondary access point vehicular for everyone. There's pedestrian walkways to the clubhouse. There's a town center access road, which will create connection to the future town center. There's these walkways that go north and south from each one of these communities, so you'll be able to walk if you live in parcel A2 or A1. And at parcel A3, you'll be connected by sidewalk to the town center also. So my point of showing you this is, ladies and gentlemen, this community has a significant amount of connections. Just a few more slides so you get an idea of what it looks like from the connectivity standpoint. And finally, just in that little area, there is a tremendous amount of sidewalks and linkage paths. In fact, it's 10.8 miles. And I'm just gonna remove the site plan for a second and show you what it looks like. That red line indicates every sidewalk within this area. I could not run 10.8 miles if someone paid me to, but I could ride my bike 10.8 miles. So Avenir, as it fully develops, I suspect there'll probably be 40 to 50 miles of sidewalk and connections as we move forward, just estimating on this being a portion of the site moving forward. So city staff is recommending approval, is recommending appro, or is recommending the approval of the site with conditions of approval. We are in agreement with those proposed conditions of approval in clarification with the memorandum of understanding. And that's my presentation for this evening. I'm happy to answer any questions. I have probably another 30 slides if you'd like and answer any questions you may. Thank you.
Thank you, Ken. Okay, I am, staff have anything they wanna add?
There is a staff presentation, but since the applicant's presentation was extremely thorough, our information would be identical and we are more than happy to answer any questions from the council, but we will defer. We are recommending approval as the applicant indicated of resolution three. Thank you.
Thank you, and I have no cards on this. So questions, comments? Rochelle?
What are the conditions of approval again, Natalie? If you could quickly?
Oh, I apologize. Let me close, let me close the hearing. Thank you. Bring it back for discussion.
Thank you, madam. There are 46 conditions of approval. They're listed all specifically and they're set forth in the resolution, so I'm more than happy to answer any specific questions. Many of them are the standard conditions of approval that are included in most all of our development order.
There's nothing out of the ordinary in there?
There's conditions of approval that are specific to the site plan itself, lane geometry, traffic, but really, the vast majority of these conditions are very standard.
Anything you'd like to add?
Sure. I spent a considerable amount of time reviewing this proposal and I'd like to briefly make six observations. First, the size of the lots in this pod are consistent with those in Frenchman's Reserve, Evergreen, and Paloma. These lot sizes are consistent with the PCD, as Ken pointed out in an excellent presentation, Ken. There are no back-to-back lots and the homes are on lakes and green areas. Second, the project overall is unique and the homes are on lakes and green areas. It's gonna be an incredible project. There'll be tennis and pickleball courts, beautiful clubhouses and rec centers, walking trails, parks, a preserve area, crystal lagoons, as Ken talked about. The town center's gonna have restaurants and shopping. We saw that there's gonna be a world-class golf course. And there'll be different architecture in all of the different pods, British Colonial, Dutch Colonial, Coastal, and Modern. Second of all, many consumers desire the privacy and security of gated communities and the pods that we're looking at are gated. I wanna point out that the main spine roads in Avenir are not gated, so the community's fully accessible to everyone. And of course, gated communities yield higher property values and they create a quiet, intimate neighborhood. And also, there's parks in every community. Third, our traffic engineers and independent traffic engineers have found that there'll be no stacking at this pod, which is very important. Fourth, as far as drainage is concerned, the city and private engineers have found that there's sufficient and adequate drainage. Fifth, the variance makes sense. Having the equipment on one side of the homes gives consumers the ability to plan where they wanna live, so that's a very good thing. Finally, as far as the variance with respect to the sidewalks and the lakes, we've already proved this variance in the other parts of this project because they make sense. No one wants people to be walking in back of their homes. So for all these reasons, I will be voting in favor of this project.
Thank you, Matthew. Carl?
Well, we all had multiple meetings on this because of the way, the questions and comments and suggestions, what that P&amp;Z had. I was gonna go one direction on this, but I'm gonna go another direction. I don't have a problem with this at all. I think my concern might be is maybe the, the presentation to the P&amp;Z board might be, going forward, might want to give a more overall picture like we had tonight so they can make an educated decision and not get confused one way or another. I don't know how many meetings they go to. I try and stay out of them, but I lean on them and I lean on their insight, because I'm not a developer, so I have to pay attention to what they think as it climbs up the ladder. But I'm not gonna question any of this. I mean, I think site plan one that everybody approved is, or site plan two is pretty much the same as site plan one, is it not? So there's gonna be multiple conversations with this, because everybody wants Avenir to be the best it can possibly be because of what it's gonna provide to the city and what it's gonna do for the future residents. And I'm not gonna, I'm gonna support making this as best as it can be while I'm here. And I just wanna make sure that the P&amp;Z people are thoroughly educated as we are, so they can make their vote count. I'm not gonna get into the weeds of the questions, because it's fine. So thank you. It was a good presentation, Ken.
Thank you. Mark?
I have a few comments and maybe a question or two thrown in too, but I think at the very beginning, we had spoken about this, when we first started seeing the concept of Avenir and the small town within the city that is gonna develop in the western part of our city, the one thing that we all wanted, everybody, not just us, but everyone, it had to be special, it had to be, you know, to the standards of Palm Beach Gardens. And I think when, when we first saw the approval, the request for approval of parcel one, my first thought was, well, what are we getting out of this? What is, what is being proposed? Is this gonna be just another set of gated communities with people locked in gates and nothing special about it? And I was very concerned, I'll be honest with you, and I did listen to the planning and zoning board's comments, and they had a lot of questions, some of which I wasn't really too concerned about, I think they were more technical questions, but it really brought to the surface, you know, what are we, what are we looking at? What are we trying to do? What are you trying to do? And what do we want for Avenir? And that was really what brought, so I wanna thank the planning and zoning board, none of them are here tonight, but I wanna thank them for asking questions and bringing some of these concerns to the forefront, because I don't think any of us really saw the entire parcel, the entire project as a whole, even us, because, you know, we allow staff, staff does a wonderful job and you're all in the weeds. We're not. We're just waiting to see what comes to us and we didn't really know what was coming. My first thought was, well, I don't wanna see, and I'm not gonna try to bash any other parts of the county, but there are parts of our county where you drive down a road and it's a gate and a gate and a gate and a gate and a gate. And you know, Ken, we've said this, I hate gates, but I also have to understand that that's what the developers want and that's what people want, that's what consumers want. But the important part about this particular thing was every community is a little, every gate is a little different. All the homes are different sizes, all the lots are different sizes. And it's not contained within each pod, so there is community centers, instead of recreation centers, community centers, where people are gonna be going out to them, so that you're not gonna be stuck in a little spot by yourselves. The other questions and concerns I had was the connectivity. You know, Maria, you were in Babcock Ranches and the desire of those developers to create a community that's all interconnected is really special. Now, I don't know how fast we think those types of communities are gonna develop, but the golf cart connectivity, allowing people to get from one side of the community to the other and not have to get in their car. I don't know if people are gonna ride their bikes in July, but they probably will ride their golf carts to Publix or to the restaurants or to whatever, the parks. So that was very important to me too, and having those wide sidewalks on both sides. I wasn't too concerned about some of the questions about safety setbacks, drainage, et cetera. I'm trusting you and the staff and the builders to make sure that these are safe communities. And, you know, I had spoken with Rosa about the retail component of the community. Retail is a question mark going forward. We don't really know what big box retailers are gonna be, and I know that's not part of this, but it's part of the overall picture of the entire area, is that, you know, you're not just putting square boxes and putting retail, which we all know doesn't draw a lot of interest, doesn't draw a lot of excitement to a community, so having these crystal lakes or whatever they are called, lagoons with mountains, really, and snow, it really brings something special to it. So the questions that were brought up, that were brought up by the planning and zoning, some of which were legitimate, some of which I think were over-technical, but I'm really grateful for their, for their insight, because it allowed us to ask you the questions, to come back to us and let us know really what's happening. So our city and our residents know what's coming when we talk about the progress in Avenir, so that's really the best part about it, because I think our residents wanna make sure that this is something special, that's gonna be a big part of the city. I did have a question though, Ken. For those of us that won't be living in Avenir, there's gonna be the conservation area and there's gonna be walking paths and hiking paths and what have you. How does a non-resident of Avenir access those areas? Where's it gonna be parking for them? Is there gonna be places for them to get in and around?
Thank you, council members. So I gotta go out to one of the bigger pictures here. The answer to your question is yes, but I wanna show you on a plan.
Yeah, but where's there, like, is there a place to park and get out and?
Yeah, so a couple things. First thing, I'm gonna address both the public access and the private access, because there's both. The, all of the parcels that are adjacent to the conservation area will have access, there'll be a gate there. But also, we intend to, as part of, there is a, there is a pump station to be located in this area. We intend to add parking to that, so there'll be a trailhead for folks in that area. And potentially, a little further up, there'll be a trailhead. It, you know, you forget that from Northlake Boulevard to this boundary is two miles, it's 2.12 miles, and then north through the conservation area is another two miles. So as we look, as we look what we're doing on the road, potentially, there could be another spot on the north end for a trailhead also, but we definitely potentially see one in the pump area or where the pump station's gonna go, that there'll be access there and there'll be a trailhead and a parking lot within that area, so there'll be access for everyone, because that conservation area is open to the public. It is not a private conservation area.
Right. The other question I had, and we didn't mention it during our meeting, was I like the, I'm really happy about the idea of having golf carts going around. You know, we have to think about being greener communities and this allows people to just charge their golf cart and go around. Will there be public charging stations for golf carts in the town center, in the parks, in the community centers?
For sure in the town center, that's already into design and we'll take what you just said under consideration for the other areas. You know, we all see the golf cart in this community as being that transitional until the electric car really becomes fully, fully functioning and all the, all the other vehicles are done. But yes, we definitely already have charging stations proposed in the town center and we'll take a look at the other areas of the community also.
And I guess the homes will have to have availability for golf carts within their garage. I know that's not part of this either, but...
No, that's, no, it's a very fair point. During the design of the homes, some, some builders will have a specific access for golf carts, some will use existing or will use regular parking garages, but that's gonna be an important part of this community and each community's gonna kinda define... important part of this community, and each community's going to kind of define their own way or their own design tactic for that.
Well, obviously, we want to encourage people to have that access, or have the ability to purchase and charge within their garages.
Yes, I should say also, the recreation area, well, obviously, will have charging stations also for golf carts.
Yeah, you don't want to get people to the parks and then have to push it home.
Right.
Makes sense. And I think that's really the last of my comments, so thanks again for taking the time to educate all of us about the big picture of this project.
Council member, you're exactly right. I wish I would have done this to the Planning and Zoning Board. I think we'd be here with a different recommendation.
So, in your meetings that you've had with some of the Planning and Zoning members, what was their secondary take on, or what was the conversation like, if you can share?
I mean, it's obviously kind of a little awkward question for me right now, but the answer to questions, all of them have been fairly positive, and they really, what they appreciated the most was understanding the big picture. They didn't get to see that. What they saw was the twenty-minute presentation on Site Plan Number One, the four hundred and sixteen lots. They, and several of those members weren't on the board when we went through the original approval, so they didn't really understand about the fifty-one percent land area, the rec center's going to go here. When we walked them through the project, I would say that all of them were very excited about the details and the thought that our client has put into this, and just looking forward to the future.
Well, I know, and I've been told I'm a dinosaur, because I don't like gates, and I like to cut my own grass, but I understand that that's not where the market goes, so I thank you again.
Yes, sir.
You can come to my house if you want to cut the grass.
I got a yard.
I got two teenage boys. They're willing to do it for me.
Mayor, I got one more question.
Carl?
Ken, I have one more question for you. You had mentioned that you didn't quite have adequate time when you were talking to the P and Z board. Is there something the city can do to adjust or amend your ability to give a full presentation?
No, that was really my fault on the way I did the presentation. Typically, when you're doing a site plan, Vice Mayor Woods, you want to focus in on the topic that's in front of you. You don't submit a lot of information that's kind of not part of the record. What I showed you tonight is a conceptual plan. I can't commit to you that that conceptual plan is going to be there. So, typically, when you try to do a site plan, you typically try to stay focused on what the matter that is in front of, in front of the board tonight, which will be the third item that we did, not the first two, but I should have thought that, when I thought about it, I should have given them the big picture, particularly, there were a lot of new members who hadn't really seen the project before.
Yeah, and we, well, now that we've been here a few years altogether, we've all been ingrained in Avenue since the day one, so the new person is a little bit handicapped as I was a few years ago, but...
And honestly, I forget, too. I mean, it's the size and the scale, and we've been...
It's a big deal.
It's a big deal. We've been involved in every lot and every corner for the last four years. This particular site plan's been in the process for two years, and you kind of get worn out, and you think everybody knows what you know? Well, no, you don't, and we need to do a better job of communicating, and that was really my responsibility.
Thank you, Ken. Thanks, Mayor.
Rochelle, you said you had another question?
So, it was just something that, well, originally, when I was recognized, you asked if there were questions, so I asked questions. I didn't make comments, so I kind of postponed my comments, so I'll do that now real quick. But Mark had mentioned about the golf carts, and I had been in a community up on the Panhandle at one point, and they had golf carts available for rental, so that people who drove in and parked at the town center would have access to all the rest of the property and not have to drive their cars the two miles all the way up. And the same thing with the bikes, that they, it might be something you want to consider having the bike kiosks where you can come in, go to the town center, and take a bike ride if you want, so that might be something. Since I didn't make comments, I'll do it real quick, and then Maria, you can sum up with everything, so. When I was looking at the project and when it was first presented to me with the P and Z's reservations, besides the one not being able to see what the buildings actually look like, and I get that, because each builder will have their own idea, the other two main points were that there were gates on the communities and that there should be an open walking path around all the bodies of water behind everyone's home. And in thinking of that and going back and looking at it, I mean, the parcels are consistent with the PCD. They're consistent with the profiles of the other gated, zero, and small lot-lined communities that are of comparable size in the city. They don't fit the profile of our non-gated communities like the Platts and Lake Catherine. The neighborhoods are geared for families, and I think security and safety is a big issue for families, and I can see why the market would drive a gated community over a non-gated community, especially given that all the spine roads are open and that everyone else will have access to this lovely community. As far as the walking paths behind the homes, I know that was a sticking point for some of them, and I think not only is that a safety concern, but it raises issues of privacy, that we had the Mirabella people in here who were afraid of houses looking down on them, and that was over a wall and a giant buffer area, and this would have neither, so you would have people literally walking behind the back of your house. So, that didn't really make any sense to me. So, as far as the main issues that they gave for their not approving the project, I don't seem to go along with any of them, and I think it's a lovely project, and I'm looking forward to seeing what it's actually going to look like when the developer submits his drawings.
Well, thank you, council member. I'd like to add, like to add one thing to what you said. In regards to the architecture, I just want to be clear, when we come back before you in the future, we're not coming back before you to change the site plan. What we're bringing back before you is only the architecture, the entry feature, and maybe the gates, but we are not changing the site plan in the future, so what you're approving tonight is the plan. Thank you, ma'am.
Well, I think everybody has pretty much covered it. I don't have much else to say. I do appreciate the presentation this evening. Going forward, I know we have waivers around the city. We have waivers in place for a reason. We can't by code think of everything, so waivers are an important tool in our toolbox, and I appreciate the fact that, Ken, you changed your presentation to give some comparison to other communities, so that the planning and zoning people could actually see that this has already been in place somewhere else. It's not a unique thing. You're not asking for anything truly outside of the box. That's important. I do appreciate when a little bit of the code is spelled out for us, because we haven't written a code, and if anybody saw what our code book looks, code book looks like, it's about this thick. So, we appreciate the education and the time that you've taken, and with that, I will... We've had our discussion. Did we have our motion in our second, Max?
No.
Okay.
I'll make a motion that we adopt Resolution Three, two thousand and nineteen.
Second.
Okay. I think we had enough discussion, so all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries five-zero. Thank you very much for taking the time and the good presentation.
Thank you again. Good evening.
All righty. Resolution Four, two thousand and nineteen. May I have the clerk read the title, please?
Resolution Four, two thousand and nineteen, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Palm Beach Gardens, Florida, approving an amendment to the allo building identification signage for the Devastated Towers project within the Gardens Corporate Center, Plan Unit Development, PUD. This is located on the northeast corner of PGA Boulevard, an alternate A1A is more particularly described herein, providing conditions of approval, providing waivers, providing infected date, and further purposes.
Thank you. I will open the hearing, and has anyone had any expertises?
No.
No. Hello?
Good evening.
Thank you.
For the record, Nadia Solora, representing Congress Avenue, Congress, excuse me, Gardens Corporate Center, LLC. Get my companies mixed up. I can, and my presentation will be very different to...
You've been sworn in.
Oh, I have already.
Thank you, sir.
My presentation is going to be very different to Ken's. Firstly, it's very brief, and I have no mountains, but we have a couple of pyramids.
Okay.
About the signage for Devastated Towers, just, I think you all know it, but I think I'm required to say it. The project is located north of PGA, founded by alternate A1A and Cadeau Gardens Drive, two hundred, almost two hundred and twenty-four thousand square feet of Class A office, both towers under construction. So, this is a view of what we ultimately will look like once the sign's installed. Tower One, which is the southern tower, is closely looking like this at this time. The signage is thirty-six inch channel letters, flush-mounted. They will look bronze by night, by day, excuse me, face illuminated channels, letters, white LED at night. This is a view of it at night. During the day. So, we need two waivers. We're requesting to put a second, two signs on each building. Your code only allows for one unless you're on I-95. We're close to I-95, but not quite there, so we had to get a waiver. And also, our initial application met the square footage that you allow, but we, staff pointed out to us, and we agreed that it really wasn't quite legible, so we need a waiver of sixteen square feet for the overall size of the signage. The public benefit that we're offering is four electric charging stations and substantial additional landscaping. The signs will go on the west side, on the, both buildings on the west side, facing alternate A1A, and on the south tower, will go on the PGA side, and on the north tower, it will face Cadeau Gardens, but it will also be seen from alternate A1A, I think, at some And that concludes my presentation.
Well, thank you very much. I have no cards on this, so I will close the hearing, and I will bring it back for a discussion. Any discussion? Questions?
Sure. Nadia, I can tell you that as I travel around town, people are all talking about these towers, how beautiful they are, and they're especially excited about the artwork.
Great. We're looking forward to it. In fact, it's already formed in the sense of scale of it. In fact, I was going to say, the second pyramid is scheduled to be installed next week. We're not exactly sure whether it's Wednesday, Thursday, or Friday. I think the pyramid itself will be ready, but we're waiting to hear from the crane operator to make sure we get the crane there, and we will let staff know, and if any of you would like to come and see it being put up, there's quite interesting. I know you, Mayor, you came out to see it, and now that the parking structure is there, you don't have to rough it. I think we can, we can take you on top of the parking structure on the third floor, and you should have a bird's-eye view of it, so I will coordinate that once the crane operator gives us a call.
Thank you, Nadia. Rochelle?
I just think it's a great addition to the gateway to the city, that when you have the bridge and now the two towers, and when those pyramids are going to be lit, I think it really says, you know, welcome to Palm Beach Gardens and...
I think it does, yes.
An entryway to the urban core of the city, so...
Great. Thank you.
I do have a question, a comment slash question. With all of the electric cars that you're seeing driving around town, and when you go to hotels, and the first four spots that are electrical cars that are reserved, they're always the first ones taken. Do you anticipate the need for more than just four spots in your parking garage at some point?
Well, we, we actually didn't have any. As part of the waiver, we put in these four, and I was actually very surprised when I dug into it, how much electricity they use, because we did talk to staff perhaps putting some more, but the, this was like an afterthought, if you will. So, the electric service was already designed and installed to the two towers and the parking and everything, and once we added in these four, we had to basically take away power from the buildings to power these electric charges, and the maximum we could do was the four. If we put any more, I think if people plug in, the lights in the building may dim a little bit, which wouldn't do our marketing too much good.
Wow. Okay.
Carl, anything?
Not really. I'm just kind of excited, because this was one of the first projects that I jumped into the second I walked into this building, and I just want to make sure that when you have a lighting ceremony, that we're all there.
Oh, yeah, absolutely.
Because I'm sure that's going to be fun.
We look forward to that. It'll probably be sometime early to midsummer is when we think we'll have all the landscaping in and ready for CO, basically, on the first tower. Second tower about six months later.
Well, this is perfect for the corridor, and we're excited to have these open, and it brings business and job opportunities, so we're ready to rock and roll on them, so keep us posted.
We're working hard to get it done, I tell you.
Yeah, thank you, Nadia.
Thank you.
Derek, nice. Thank you very much.
Pleasure.
I have nothing to add. We have a smart council. They ask the right questions.
That's right.
So, with that note, we've had a motion.
I'll make a motion that we adopt Resolution Four, two thousand and nineteen.
Second?
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Good night. Thanks.
Okay. Next on our agenda, are any additional resolutions we need to talk about?
Anybody else getting an award?
We've got a lot of nice awards given out today. Items for council action discussion. Any other discussions anybody wants to have?
I don't know if it comes under items for council discussion, but Eric, all the computers are an hour off, so I've been thinking we were like really running out of time. We're getting close to closing here.
Mine says nine fifty-nine.
Oh, mine says ten forty-nine.
This one says nine forty-seven.
I got nine fifty-four.
So, all night long, I'm like, you know...
I just look at that clock up there. So, that's it. Any other comments?
Look forward to seeing everybody on Saturday and Sunday.
Perfect. And we actually have, we actually have a city attorney report slot here. Anything to report, Max?
No, ma'am.
Thank you very much. Having said that, we are now adjourned. Thank you very much.